Ms. Sarah, that was your turn.
Yes.
Oh, I'm a favorite. It was great. Your turn, Karen.
We'd like to welcome everyone out to the Highland City Council meeting on Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two. It is now seven oh two P. M. We'd like to recognize that we have our full council here. We have one council member joining us via, I think it's going to be via Facebook, Zoom, by phone, which will be Sarah Peterson. So Sarah will be on phone. We'd also like now go ahead and begin our meeting with an invocation by council member Brittany Bills, and then we'll have a special flag ceremony by the Highland Alpine Scout Troop Twenty.
Our good Father, Good Mother, we're so grateful tonight for the opportunity we have to gather together as a council residence of Highland. Pray that we'll be able to help experiment with this. It will make good decisions and do so in a way that is completely respectful. We ask you to please bless the people like Ukraine and everybody else who are suffering from war or natural disaster, that it will have a clear peace and ask for the same Jesus Christ to them.
Audience, please rise. Color guard, attention. Proper hand salute. Forward march. Color guard, halt. Cross the colors. Close the flag of the United States of America. Close the flag of the state of Utah. Close the flag of Highland City. Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, form ranks. Return to ranks. Audience may be seated.
Color guard dismissed. We appreciate once again the Highland Alpine Troop Twenty for their flag ceremony. At this time, we have in our agenda a time for unscheduled public appearances. We'd like to invite anyone here that would like to come up and address the city council on any item. We just ask that you keep it to under three minutes, and when you come up, feel please state your name. Is there anyone that would like to come up and address the city council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to item number two, which are presentations. Our first presentation will be by the library board. I believe Donna, we have you doing that, correct?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, come up, please.
What are your words? All right, let's see. The next slide.
Is there a mic here? If you could just, and just press to make sure the green button's on, it'll help you.
It actually is always on, Mayor. We've made some changes, some preliminary changes to our A V upgrades. So Kevin, will you talk into them near the mic again and make sure we can hear you?
Can you hear me? No, yes, maybe. I can hear myself. It's great.
Okay, there it's going.
Stephanie, is your audio okay? Okay.
You're gonna have to advance live for me. All right. So, good evening. I'm Kevin Tams. I serve as the chair of the Highland City Library Board. The library board operates under the direction of the Highland City Council and is governed by the Utah State and Highland City Municipal Codes. In making this report, we are compliant with the Utah State Code and our own bylaws. First, I would like to ask any library volunteers, employees, foundation members, and board members to stand so we can recognize these wonderful people with a quick round of applause. I think Donna's here, and Future E is here, and Member Y is here, so thanks, everyone, for all you do. Jump to the next slide. So during the next few minutes, I'd like to discuss why the Highland City Library matters. I will share with you some statistics from the prior year, and I'll also focus on three areas: economic impact, impact on community development, and impact on literacy and education. So next slide. All right. Last year was another banner year for the library. As a result of the diligent efforts of our library employees, volunteers, and amazing residents, we saw a number of key increases. We have more patrons than the prior year. We have more physical items and more children items. And our digital collect circulation continues to increase. So those are some highlights. The next slide. Focusing on the economic area, I'd like to share a few stories. A few weeks ago, we had a patron come into the library. She was studying for a major nurse exam. Passing this exam would provide the patron with more opportunity in her work, and she would benefit our community. We hope she was successful in her efforts and are grateful that our library could participate in her growth. We had another patron who was working on growing their business, and they were able to leverage the library resources to help grow and expand their businesses. Specifically, they were able to conduct an on-air interview in a quiet place. One study out of Wisconsin showed that investing a dollar in a library generates four dollars and twenty-three cents in economic return. As a result of resources, events, and activity, our library has a halo effect. The halo effect is that many of our library patrons support a local business on their way to and from the library. Our library matters and helps our local economy. Next slide. Our library is also a key resource for our community. It could be answering a question, using a study room, volunteering, or a number of other things. Our library matters. Here you can see our wonderful director Donna Carden and Rebecca Relaford on a local news segment promoting Highland City and our community. Just another example of how our library makes Highland City look good. Thanks. Oh, that went way fast. All right, so we'll avoid the technical difficulty here. All right. Looking at our impact on communities, if you would have attended the library Bitcoin event earlier this year, you might have avoided some financial challenges. You could have also learned more about STEM. Perhaps you were interested in writing a book or building a lantern, searching for something of treasure, learning about Timpano's Cave, or writing a poem. Our wonderful library has provided over three hundred hour, three hundred activities to help our communities. Next slide. Our library matters because they connect people and ideas. Our library matters because they enrich personal learning and recreation. Our library matters because they develop a community identity. Our library matters because they create a sense of ownership and sustain a strong democracy. Next slide. Our award-winning library is a financially-minded library. In the last fiscal year, as a result of our amazing staff, they have applied for and received over fifty thousand dollars in grant money. The library foundation is active and working with the community to address appropriate library needs. Next slide. Libraries have a great impact on literacy and education. The infant and preschool programs prepare children for kindergarten and offer parents much-needed support and the community they desire. These programs target different age needs, including STEM backpacks, grandparents' storytime, science program, poetry and arts, to name a few. Another fun result of active library patrons includes a three to five percent increase on A C T scores for eleventh graders. More than anything, our library connects us and uplifts us. It is a reoccurring positive experience with our city. Our library is so much more than books and walls. It is part of the fabric that weaves our community together and is a key part of what makes Highland City so special. Thank you. Any questions?
You know, I guess one question I might have is I think it showed you had about fifty-eight hundred patrons, but five hundred and seventy-eight had just recently joined in the last year. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Donna, yes. Donna's the statistics person. So every year, we're increasing the patrons. Patrons have to re-up. So after so many years, they have to re-sign in, and so we're always recycling. Donna, come up here and you speak to the statistics.
So as you may have remembered from previous presentations, one of the things that had bothered me is that the total number of library patrons had gone down the first three years that I was director. But this year, we turned it around and we increased by more than five hundred patrons. So I'm excited about that.
Big win.
Yeah.
Do you know, like, where those patrons are from? Are they Highland, Cedar Hills?
Alpine.
Alpine?
Of course, our biggest group are the Highland group. They're about two-thirds. And then between Alpine and Cedar Hills is about a third. And Alpine has more than Cedar Hills.
And do both cities help reimburse some of the costs of their residents?
Yes, so non-residents from Alpine and Cedar Hills or from whatever place they may be have to pay a non-resident fee. And our non-resident fees that we collected last year was about equivalent to our whole book budget. So they are contributing financially a lot to our library to have them coming.
So Donna, how is New Click working?
New Click is still going strong. It still is a nice incentive for our patrons to be able to use their cards at the other libraries. We have about, each month, about six hundred circulations from New Click residents from other cities. So some use, not a ton, but some use each month from other libraries.
So how about our patrons going to other libraries? Do you have any statistics on that?
I don't, because I don't have access to their statistics. So I don't know how many of our patrons are going to other libraries.
I think the interesting part is our library is evolving, and the way that libraries are used is different. And Donna's awesome at trying to find new ways to evolve the library and how it supports our community.
So what are some of those ways? We see a lot of events going on here in the council chambers. Is that, one of those is doing a lot of different events. I mean, when you're saying you're kind of evolving the library, what are some of those evolving items?
When I first became library director, we were having nine or ten kids show up to storytimes twice a week. We're now having four or fifty show up three, four times a week. Well, family, parents, and children. So we're reaching a lot of the preschool age group, so that's changed. The variety of things that we offer has changed a lot. This year, we added Chinese-language books to support the dual immersion school in Alpine and Spanish-language books, because that's our largest non-English-speaking demographic. Those came through a grant. So that was something we hadn't really offered before. We've added circulating tablets. You know, we've added, you know, just the baskets. So we've added the preschool kits, which are super popular, and we're going to be adding some STEM kits starting either in December or January. We're gonna be getting some with a different grant, so a lot of new things to offer. We've also introduced some of the large programs like our Fairy Tale Ball and our End of Summer Reading Party and that they weren't really holding before.
I really loved your presentation about the economic impact of the library and how not just brings more revenue sources into the city, but we talked about it at our board meeting. It really is like what brings our community together. I remember going to storytime with my little kids, and it was like the only opportunity I could get to get out of the house. And we talked about that at the board meeting of how really moms are there to also be able to meet other moms. And I still have a good friend of mine that I met at library time years and years ago. So really, this is, you know, the center of our community and bringing us together, and Donna's done a great job of it. I went to her for science, U V unite, and I had all my friends are all of our kids. I mean, we overtook everything, and it was amazing. The kids still talk about it.
So I put on your desk our strategic plan for next year that we'll give you this month to look over, and then we can have you approve it or ask for alterations at the next city council meeting. Any other questions?
Okay, seeing there's none, thank you very much for the presentation. And thank you for doing such a great job there at the library. We'll now go on to our second presentation, which is from Tason with our Pressurized Irrigation Superintendent on the water update for this past year.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. This is my last presentation of the year, so. Sorry. No, it's a good thing. That means, that means we're done trying to conserve water for the year. But our efforts didn't go unnoticed. We still use less than we did last year. Our trend went up a little bit, as you can see from that line graph. September was just, the end of September was so hot that we had to use a little bit more. And you can see in the bar graph that in October, we actually used a little bit more than we did last year, which is expected with the heat that we were seeing at that time. But we were still able to save more than we did last year and quite a bit more than we did in two thousand twenty. Next slide, please. Don't know anything about this, so.
You don't want to talk to that, though.
So there's the numbers. We saved three percent less than last year and twenty percent less than twenty twenty. The Pearl River status, the big thing that I want to show there is we saved twelve hundred and five acre feet in the two thousand twenty-one season, and we basically did that again, saved twelve hundred feet this year, which puts us at twenty-four hundred feet as a storage little bank account for next year. And that may fluctuate just depending on if they give us a hundred percent allocation, or it could be anything next year depending on.
So at the end of the year last year, we only had twelve hundred up at Deer Creekers. Was there some savings from the years?
Yeah, that's, we had twelve hundred in kind of a, just a separate bank, and then we get our annual allotment. So that was on top of our annual allotment. So this year, we were able to double that amount. And so we'll have our annual allotment plus that twenty-four hundred acre feet, which is great, because going into this season, we had twelve hundred and five in that bank. Now we have twenty-four hundred in that bank. So if next year's a really bad year, we have even more to draw from, depending on what allocation they give us. I mean, if it's a really dry year, at the beginning of this year, they were talking about a sixty-five percent allocation. They bumped that up to about a ninety percent allocation. So next year, it could be anything. We don't know. Hopefully, it's a wetter year than we've had. And then our ongoing strategies are kind of what they've been. They seem to be working for us. The text and email really seems to work, so we're gonna continue to do those efforts. Any questions for me?
I want to tell you thank you. How many meters? I know we're getting prepared for all the meter installations. How many meters did we put in this last year?
In this last year, I don't have the exact number. We put in quite a few with all the new construction. Every new home gets an irrigation meter when it's built. And then we're still waiting on.
So the only council member?
Yeah.
We call Mrs. Sidewalk. It's underneath her cement, if you understand.
Still waiting on that fancy box for her driveway.
So if the, if the council was interested in getting readings on their pressurized system, I mean, I assume, is it, it doesn't come on our bill at all, does it? How would we get?
Not yet. What I do, since it doesn't come on my bill yet, is I actually go and lift the lid and look at it, but.
Okay, so there's like a little, well, no, it's like a little digital counter. So if I went and looked, I could see what my digital counter, then, you know, if I do it at the beginning of the year, and then I could kind of look each month, and that'd kind of give me my indication.
And you can do that. Does Lorena have that, or Gretchen have that information that they could pull from?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure if our routine drive-by reads are reading them yet. What I was gonna say is stay tuned, and on item.
Okay, we're gonna go through.
On item twelve, we'll talk a little bit about that. Part of what we're proposing to purchase is the readers that will read them automatically and the software that kind of links everybody up, you know, for being able to get on the web portal and get your live reads to your pressurized irrigation meters. And for those of you that are really interested, we have the leader show-and-tell over here, you know, that we can have later too, so.
That means we got to get done early enough to be able to have a show-and-tell.
But that technology won't be available to them for a few years, right? Until we're done.
So what we would anticipate is that as soon as the parts come in, we'll stand, we have to stand a couple of reading towers at a couple places, places in the, in the city, and then as we bring the meters on. So those that are on, we should be able to hook up straight away, but it's probably later next year before we really have the ability for you to get on and see automatically like on the website. But as Tason says, you can go and lift the lid and look at your meter and see what you used last month.
We're not recommending that to most residents, but I guess I can trust you guys.
They go put locks on them now, I can tell. But no, hey, so we really appreciate your efforts. You know, this has been a good year. I mean, it's been a dry year, but it appears that our residents have stepped up. We've had some good savings. We're at least looking at some of that, so.
They've definitely made the best out of a bad situation, so.
And if you, I don't know if those on the agenda, we have some zero-scaping proposals on the agenda, so that would be some further things to maybe help us in this water, water-wise.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have a presentation from Joe Hamm with Highland Marketplace. And Joe, I want you to know we are all anticipating and excited to see what you're gonna present. Maybe you can just, just so everyone kind of knows, just share a little bit so it's publicly, and everyone knows who you are.
Well, my name is Joe Hamm. I'm with Midtown National Group out of Solana Beach, California. In two thousand nineteen, we exercised a proposal, excuse me, exercised an option to buy the property behind the retail buildings that are along Highway ninety-two. And as part of our due diligence, we became aware of a development agreement that was signed in two thousand seven by the previous owner of the property that outlined the architecture that we were to follow in developing the balance of the shopping center. We appeared before you for approval of site plans, as well as that to give you our take on those elevations and get your approval to show that we were in compliance. We received our entitlements. We paid our permits and fees, and we began digging out there.
Yes, you did, and I've had a lot of residents go, what's happened? They've stopped.
We are slow learners. We spent about a million dollars just doing our grading, digging our retention ponds, but we never felt satisfied with what we were bringing to this community. And one day in a meeting, one of our partners said, "Do you like what we're building?" And I said, "I don't like what we're building." And so we decided to engage another team, and we spent weeks. We stopped our contractor, much to his chagrin. We paid our bills, and we engaged a new team to see if we could come up with some ideas that created something unique, something that was more special or special than what we were building. Because we were building, I drove many, many properties today, and I saw the same kind of architecture that I saw in that two thousand seven development agreement. Very similar, stucco, stacked rock, just a very plain southwest Rocky Mountain architecture that's built in every shopping center in every community. We wanted to do something different. We wanted to create a community gathering space. We wanted to create something that was, would be a very appealing social environment. We weren't the only ones that were demanding this. We found that as we approached the tenants that were interested in coming to the community, all of them wanted to be within the area that we had created. It was a very small plaza area. Kelly, could you go to page number ten? It's the old site plan. Stop. There you go. Thank you. Most, we, we thought that the first spaces that would go were those two drive-throughs on the west side of the space there. But much to our surprise, most of the tenants that we were talking to wanted to be a part of that plaza area and that gathering area, which was very different. Traditional shopping center development would have told us to put a big anchor tenant at the back of this property, to line it with shops, fill the front with pads, and we would have a successful center. We weren't able to secure a commitment from a large anchor tenant. So we came up with this concept and thought, maybe this little plaza area would work. Well, not only did it work, it was the place every tenant that we approached wanted to be. So with that in mind, we set our team loose. Kelly, now if you could go back several pages. We set our team loose. That was great. I liked that last slide. We set our team loose, uh, that, that was great. I liked that last slide. We scoured the area, brought our team up from California and, uh, looked at architecture and some of the old buildings in and around Highland and Alpine. And they went back and spent several weeks looking at other concepts throughout the United States. If we could go to the next slide here. These are just some of the, uh, concept ideas that we looked at in other shopping centers all throughout the United States. Let's go to the next one. These are some of the things that we thought really complemented the character of the mountains that we are so close to with that property. This Scandinavian modern farm look that you see here. Can we go to the next slide, Kelly? And then we got into identifying how we might design within the plaza area, some areas where families could gather, friends could gather, the community could gather. We might have performances and a lot of dining areas because that's where we were getting most of our responses from food, restaurant tours. If we could go to the next slide. We looked at finishes. We looked at having fire pits and fireplaces and, um, as I said, dining areas. Let's go to the next slide. And as I said, this was our previous site plan. So after several weeks, we said, let's make that plaza larger. So we went from ten thousand square feet to this concept here of thirty thousand, almost thirty-one thousand square feet of interior plaza area. As I said, we're going to have, uh, fire pits here, fireplaces. We're going to have a lot of very unique little isolated areas for private dining that will be just for the restaurateurs as well as common area, public dining. We're going to have a plaza area for, uh, kids to play on sculpted rock elements. And we also have seen and thought it was very unique. Someone, uh, treated an, an old tree that, uh, the kids just love to climb on. And so we're going to bring in this big log tree that lays down on its side that we've seen. That's quite unique. We created several openings to this, but we didn't want to open it to the traffic and the noise coming on Highway ninety-two. So we set our buildings so that they might block both noise as well as the environment from the highway. Uh, we created a drop-off zone on the right side or the east side of the, of what we call the village, uh, center there. And so you have to come in and, and peek around the corner to see the plaza and to participate wi- in what's going on there. So we were very excited about this idea. As I said, we're sprinkling patios throughout the, uh, plaza area. We'll have both areas for adults and children to play and to dine. Uh, we wanted it to be a place where the parents might even be dining and tell the kids, go play while we finish our conversation with friends and our food. And so we wanted people to be able to see, once they get into the plaza, from one side to the other. So I'm here tonight to ask, does this appeal to you? Is this something we should continue with? Because if it is, what we would do next is we would like to come in in the month of December, uh, right around Christmas time. I'm kidding, uh, at your next meeting in December. And we would like to propose to amend the development agreement and replace the existing exhibits that are attached to that development agreement with our concept plans here. And that would then allow us to work with staff to further develop, uh, the plans and get back to our construction, which we hope we could start back up, uh, in February or March.
So Joe, a couple of questions you might have, is you already have some existing buildings out around the, the property. Is the anticipation of those other outer line to change any of their architecture? Are you going to kind of keep them as is? And you're hoping that your landscaping kind of adds as a buffer and as a shield for this new, you know, you know, wants, because it appears to be more of a mountain earth, earth look, if you want to say, with the wood and all that, uh, maybe some rocks. Is it going to be, is it really that area or are you looking to kind of pace up the whole area?
It is our intention to reskin those buildings that we control on the outer edge of the property as well.
So which buildings, as we look going up here?
So we own the one, if I could go to the west side, Services, F and B Services, F and B Services, and that building there that was the, uh, taco store.
I thought that was going to be a bank.
It is, but it's still our building.
Okay. So, so what we're talking about is where the dry cleaners at. Okay, Quick Quack Car Wash, you do not own. You sold that as a pad. You own where the dry cleaners at, Roxbury and the Ice Cream, the T-Mobile, you own that. And then also you own Taco Bell. CBS, you do not own. You sold that. And as we go down by where Anytime Fitness, all that, and the, the, well, all those, those three buildings, do you still own those?
Do not own the Blue Lemon building.
Okay. So you own the other two on that side?
That's correct. Our initial focus will be to reskin the, the buildings. Once we finish our construction and turn our attention to the existing retail, we would first focus on what's on ninety-two. Since we don't own CBS and Blue Lemon, we'll have to see how to, uh, apply this to those two-story office buildings. We've also got some concepts, but I didn't bring them today and we're not asking today. But we've got some com- concepts that will make those two office buildings in the back also very complimentary to what we're doing in the village area.
Now, I've been hearing a lot that everyone's looking for drive-through, drive-through, drive-through because of the COVID experience. But here, I don't see drive-through at all in this inner area. I know that you, you know, so what's, share with me what you're, you said you're talking to tenants, that they seem to like this courtyard feel. But yet, we, you know, what we were hearing just in the last year, every restaurant wanted to have a drive-through. So how, what are you hearing? You're probably the freshest out there.
Well, all I can tell you is our experience was, even though we were offering several opportunities for drive-through, we had much more, um, desire for tenants to be in that courtyard area. So what we are doing is we're creating that drop-off area there. But we're also going to dedicate several of these parking spaces on the north side of the village area. That's right, right along that parking row. We'll dedicate those to the DoorDash, the Uber Eats and those pickup drivers, as well as private pickup. And that's how we will respond to those who want to just grab and go.
What concept has really been successful where they have this courtyard? I mean, I love the concept. I love having kind of a gathering place. Where have you seen this been successful that we could maybe go and say, okay, we could apply and say this has been successful in this area?
Well, if you would all get in your car and drive to Del Mar, California tomorrow.
So, okay.
There is a concept that is almost i- uh, identical to this. So I, I would love to say this is unique, but we're borrowing from several shopping centers that have been successful like this. But the most successful and the one that we thought we could bring to Highland was one called One Paseo.
Please smell that.
You can. Paseo, P A, P E A S O. No, P.
One, you said one?
Paseo. One, O N E, Paseo. And it's on Google. If you Google it, you'll get the cross.
And that's in Del Mar, California?
Del Mar, California. And interestingly, that shopping center also has several high-rises. Now, they're four and five-story high, high-rises. These are only proposed to be, uh, two-story high-rise, or two-story office buildings behind us. But they have several high-rise buildings. They also have a parking structure. And yet, the tenants will take the time, excuse me, the patrons will take the time to park in the parking structure and walk into this because it's so unique to get inside into that plaza area and have so many options for restaurants, uh, lifestyle, health. Uh, there's just quite a variety within One Paseo.
So a question. Does this, um, I need to calculate, looking at your old plans. I assume this increases the square footage of your retail food. Is that right? You're going to have more commercial square footage here. Looks like there's lots of parking. And I'm just wondering if you're.
Yes, uh, I, uh, submitted a plan to Kelly today that showed that we actually have exceeded our parking requirement. I, our requirements under the ordinance is four to one thousand and we've hit four point three nine per one thousand.
For one thousand.
So with just better planning on the parking stalls, we were able to accommodate the parking we need.
Now, you still have one building off to the far west that is still a drive-through. Is that correct?
It is, yes.
Well, that's another similar architect.
Far enough behind Quick Quack that we never did have much appeal for that. So we may come back with some changes on that one. We don't have a tenant identified for that. Uh, but, uh, that was where we thought we would put one drive-through.
Cause there's one, oh, I was going to say it's the One Paseo, the, where you got your idea for the tree trunk?
It is where we got the idea for the tree trunk. As a matter of fact, the architect, the landscape architect that we brought in to do this plan is the architect that brought that tree trunk. They got it out of a redwood forest in California. Uh, a man had treated it with oils for about twelve months at, before it was delivered to the property. And kids can crawl inside that tree. It's really a.
Oh, my kids would love that.
Unique idea. We may not do the full tree like they did, but our concept plans, if you look on page, if you look on page thirteen of your set. Uh, what, there it is. You can see in that grassy area, which is really where we thought we would do the sculpted boulders that kids could climb on. We also have that half of tree sitting right there in the middle of that plaza area. And it just has such a unique feel to it. It's not something that people are used to climbing on like that.
So have you had lots of interest from, uh, restaurants and, and, uh, retail to populate this?
We were, we were in the midst of, uh, executing about ten letters of intent, most of which were food users.
Yes.
We stopped all that because we need to start over. This is going to cost us in excess of three million dollars more than what we had budgeted. Our rents are going to have to go up commensurate with that. And so we stopped all of the letters of intent. And once we have a plan that we can go back out and show to the retailers, we'll start our marketing efforts again.
Have you, I mean, I, I take it, I mean, we have a lot of, uh, quick service one, you know. We've had a lot of residents, we've talked about doing some sit-down restaurant where it's maybe table service or things of that nature. Are you anticipating you're going to have some restaurants that might be in that type of range?
We have identified, and I, uh, I, I'm not going to spot them up yet, but we have identified three locations where we are going to hold fast until we get some sit-down restaurants. And not, even if we have a tenant that says, I have to be on that end of that building, we're not going to divide those up. We're going to wait and, uh, until we get a sit-down restaurant.
I love it. I think it looks awesome.
I'd like to comment. I, I like the idea. I think it's good. Be interesting to see what sort of businesses come in. I mean, some of the architecture I questioned, like this example of wood siding and metal roofs, I'm not sure that fits as well as I'd like it into our town center. But I guess we'll see more architectural drawings with time.
Well, I appreciate that. Uh, this architect that we brought to Highland after we decided we needed to go a different direction. Could we go back to the, uh, Fruit Orchard Building?
Burgess's?
It's on page five. There we go. These are some of the pictures that he found unique as he drove around Highland. Let's go to the next slide, Kelly. One more there. Oh, there we go. We just saw a lot of architecture here that was what we would call modern farm. We chose not to go specifically to modern farm, which is in the upper right-hand corner. We thought that we would do more of a Scandinavian look so that it looked like you might be in Councilman Smith's backyard. And feel like you had, you know, a back patio and things like that. And we wanted it to have the feel of what we thought might be a Highland neighborhood.
This, this Del Mar location, how long have they had that shopping center going?
Uh, I would say that's, uh, ten years old.
I mean, do you feel, I mean, one of the things we, we always worry about is the architectural aging and, and not fitting any longer. Do you feel like this fits in for a period longer than your, your, your stucco and rock? If you want to say that's what we kind of see out there, or?
Well, the stucco and rock that we see down at the freeway and everywhere else is, that was conceived in the nineteen eighties and has been so overbuilt. I think this kind of architecture, that the One, uh, Paseo, it really models what we see uh, down at the beach. It, it models a baton board siding that is so simple, but it's so clean and, and natural. And so we said, well, what's natural to this area up here? And we, we struck upon this idea of something not necessarily modern farm, but more of a Scandinavian look that brought the character of the mountains into the shopping center. And most importantly, my wife loves this.
I love it too. I love that we're not doing the usual stucco and rock anymore. This is great.
I agree. I like this and I love the new plan. I think it's much more friendly. It's a place we want to hang out.
Well, I hope we can prove that it's.
Well, our heritage here is Scottish, so you might want to throw a little bit of that in there because it's, I mean, they're referring numbers again, maybe.
Okay.
So, so Kelly, as we look at this, do we allow the metal roof and this type of architectural in, in our, our designs, or is this going to be a totally different change from what our code allows?
Like, uh, Mr. Hamm pointed out, this did have a development agreement. So it had specific architectural standards that are not necessarily applicable to all of our other commercial zones. I know throughout the code, they do stipulate not having like reflective metals. And so I assume if it had this mat where it didn't look like aluminum foil on top, that it would be consistent with our architectural standards.
Uh, could you go to page thirteen, Kelly? Those Alpine elevations that I showed you were homes. But the commercial application of those is really what you see on page thirteen there.
So this is kind of what you're talking about, architectural, your roofline and everything kind of more that way?
That's correct.
Joe, can we clarify too? Um, so what you're proposing is going, are going to be, uh, an amendment as far as new, new exhibits, right? But the actual agreement itself and who, what level of approvals, different things go to, right? Like, correct me if I'm wrong, but architecture is actually approved by staff as long as it meets what is in the agreement. That you're planning on staying, status quo?
That's correct. I've already had our attorney make a draft, but I have not yet submitted, but I will. We're, I've actually identified some things that have already taken place. Like the old agreement said, you need to put half the median in, in Highway ninety-two. That's done. So I've just acknowledged that some of those things have been completed.
Thank you.
Other input at all?
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I mean, this is the first time we're seeing it, so it's kind of, you, you have to kind of seek in and kind of get a little bit of a feel of what's kind of going on and things that way, so.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, now move on to our consent items, number, item number three. We have a consent item three A, which is a library board appointment of Amy Britton. And we have consent item number three B, which is a resolution for the PTIF, Public Entity Resolution. Do we have a motion or would we like to pull any of those items? Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. I move that we accept and approve consent items A, three A and three B.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Tim, second by Brittany. We're going to do a roll call vote because electronic voting is not up. Sarah, are you online?
I am.
I'm going to go ahead and call for your vote first. This is on consent item number three A and B. You are a yes. Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Kim is a yes. Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. We will now move on to item number four, which is a public hearing. It is a, it's a public hearing with an ordinance and tax amendment, the daycares, preschool, and in-home instruction. We will have, Kelly will do a presentation, I believe, on that.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. So on October 4th, there was, during our unscheduled public appearances, if you remember, there was a resident that came to share her concern regarding the need for the use of daycares and preschools in Highland City. She also expressed that commercial daycares are very expensive and can be twice as much as residential daycares, and that's why she felt like it was a needed use. And then later, we had a communication item that I presented. And after discussion, the mayor and the council members directed, or y'all directed us as staff to move forward with drafting an ordinance based on Lehigh Cities Code. When we looked at a couple of different cities' codes, that's the one that y'all wanted to base it off of. Background, the resident that spoke during unscheduled public appearances, she did submit a home occupation license in August of this year, home occupation application, excuse me, for a daycare that had between eight to 16 children. And then she was also requesting one caregiver that did not live in the home. We, as a result, during our review, recognized that it did not meet home occupation requirements, as you cannot have an employee that is not a bona fide resident at the home. And then we also recognized the potential of 16 children as exceeding a typical impact for a home occupation. And we, as staff, concluded that it was necessary to update the code to clarify this. And that's why we brought this to y'all as a communication item on October 4th. Just a little reminder or refresher as to the city codes where this does not line up with and the development code. Under the home occupation section, under supplementary regulations, it does call out that, well, the biggest factor is that the amount of traffic and parking shall not be contrary to the intent of the zone. And obviously, we're looking at single-family zones, R140, R130, and R120. They also shall not generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic in excess of that customarily associated with the zone in which the use is located. I added a note that average trips per day for a single-family home in Utah comes out to 11.26. Essentially, each child that could be going to a daycare or preschool would generate four trips alone. And so if you consider eight to 16 children, you're timesing that before, and I can't do that math in my head right now, but it's a lot more than 11. Municipal code also requires that only bona fide residents of the premises, as defined by the city zoning ordinance, shall be employed by the licensee. And so that's where we came to that issue again. Just recognizing differences between daycare versus preschool as far as impact goes, they could be different as far as preschool. You typically have more concentrated trips going back and forth because you have shorter blocks of time with the pickup and drop-off. Daycare is typically in-run from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You may see a lot more trips in those morning and evening peak hours. Like I said, potential impact, you have approximately four trips generated per child. Sometimes at daycares, the caregivers are also driving them to and from school, which could potentially generate more trips. Another impact is cars backing out onto public roads or possibly flipping EWEs on local streets. Another, like I said, is that caregivers that do not live in the home doesn't meet our home occupation requirements. The state, after having several calls with the state to figure out what they actually regulated, they lump residential preschools and daycares as one. They just see it as childcare. And so anything that's less than four hours, they do not regulate at all. Anything more than four hours, you need a childcare license through the state. And so we, in our definitions and our proposal, did separate the two, where the in-home instruction and residential preschools have to be less than four hours. That way, we can make sure that this whole chunk does not need childcare licensing. And then anything more than four hours, we define as daycare, and you're required to get your childcare license. The state regulates everything that I have listed here. And they also do conduct annual inspections to make sure that these requirements are being met. We did send out appropriate public hearing notices. I did not post it on the Daily Herald because we don't have to. It was posted on state and city websites and placed in three public places, and I have not received any resident comment on the issue. Planning Commission, the Planning Commission held their public hearing last Tuesday. We received no resident comment. The commissioners initially had very different opinions as far regarding the need for this use and questioned why it was being brought to them essentially. But after a lot of discussion, about two hours of it, the Planning Commissioners ended up coming to a conclusion as far as what they agreed with in staff's proposal and then changes that they wanted to be made. Another, this last bullet point is called out in the report, but the Planning Commission discussed that, and was, were very vocal that they were in favor of allowing additional teachers for in-home instruction slash residential preschools that are not bona fide residents of the home. This, we recognized after the meeting that it wasn't included in the motion. And so if the council agrees with that, we made an alternative motion for you to include that. If not, you can just leave it out. Okay. I wanted to do it this way, just to show the original staff proposal before Planning Commission. And then the strike-throughs are what Planning Commission wanted to remove, and the underlying is what they wanted to add. As far, for daycares, we are proposing that all home occupation regulations except, are met, except caregivers not being required to live in the home. That's mainly because childcare licensing, when you have a certain number of children, and that's all, it's dependent on the ages of your children. You could require two or three or even four caregivers depending on the ages of the children. And so rather than possibly conflicting with the state requirements, the proposal was to allow for, the original proposal was to allow for the minimum number. So if state requires two, based on how many children you're going to have, all you can have is two. The Planning Commission, after discussion, kind of pointed out that it's not a little, just that daycares wouldn't just be having four or five caregivers just because, because they're going to still be wanting to make a profit. And so they're only going to have the number of caregivers that would be considered profitable. And so it was just allowing them to do what they think is good for their business, essentially. We have it called out that they do have to get the licensing from the Utah Department of Health and Human Services. Planning Commission wanted to add that for any type of daycare, they would be required to submit a traffic flow and parking plan that staff would approve before approving that home occupation license. Daycares, we've split into essentially three types. These numbers are based on Lehigh Cities Code, if you remember how they split that up. Type one is eight children or less. Type two, originally was nine to 16 children. Planning Commission proposed to change it to 12. And commercial was originally 16 plus. Planning Commission proposed to make it 12 children plus. And I'll call out those specific commercial zones in a moment. For type two, as we recognize, it's more of an impact. These are the two requirements or site requirements that the Planning Commission discussed and preferred. Essentially, within a quarter-mile radius from another daycare or preschool, well, you wouldn't be able to have a license if you're within a quarter of a mile from another type-two daycare or preschool. And then also requiring at least one off-street parking space per caregiver. And then these other two possibilities were ones that we presented to the Planning Commission. This is also something that was discussed that Orem City Code requires. And the Planning Commission did not want to include either of those as site requirements for type two, as they seem to be, well, some you just wouldn't be able to have it at your site if you're a collector or arterial. And then just recognizing the expense of possibly having to put a turnaround in your property. In-home instruction, this includes residential preschools. We're proposing that all home occupation regulations be met. We previously discussed possibly minimizing it to only two time blocks. Like preschools, you can only have two time blocks. But once we got more into discussion where we're lumping these together with swim lessons and piano lessons and that type of in-home instruction, it didn't make sense to do two time blocks when those time blocks could potentially be 30-minute lessons. So we, they came to the conclusion of, you know what, we're just going to cap it at max 12 students per day. The 12 students is what Lehigh City Code has. It's also why they proposed putting a 12-student max on the type-two for daycares, was just to be consistent across the board. We're okay with 12, provided that no student attend for longer than four hours. So that's, again, making sure it's under that not needing a childcare license from the state.
Right. So Kelly, you're saying if you have a preschool, less than four hours, it's now capped at max 12 students? So what are we at right now?
We, that's the issue. Technically, by our home occupation license standards, they technically wouldn't be allowed. We do have some that have been allowed in the past. But going through this review of a daycare wanting eight to 16 children, we just recognized that it was more impact than what is outlined in our home occupation standards. So technically, we could say that that's prohibited. And so we're trying to make it clear and outline, this is the impact that we're okay with for preschools, and we recognize that they should be allowed, if that's what the council sees fit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it just makes sense. I just know most preschools have 16 kids in a classroom.
Okay. That 12, like I said, that 12 came from Lehigh Cities Code. We just use that number.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Real quick. The issue always becomes the traffic. And you had four trips for each preschool and for each daycare?
For each child.
For each child. Where does that statistic come from?
Oh, that's just from pickup and drop-off. Each-
Well, I know it's pickup and drop-off, but do you pick up and drop off the same kid twice a day?
No, by the way, are you tied, so if they drop, if they take, that's one, and then drop off is two?
Yes. Each, a trip is defined as going 2.8.
Coming and going.
Yes. So coming and going is two trips.
Oh, okay.
That's how it adds up to four.
That's how you come up with the four. Okay, I was trying to-
Yes, exactly. So that 11.26 average trips for a single-family home is about five to six times leaving the home, because you're leaving and coming back.
So another question, I've been thinking as you presented this. You're saying if it's a type-two daycare, they can't be close to another daycare or a preschool more than a quarter of a mile. But if you have a type-one daycare, you can be under that. So-
That's correct. As it stands, that's how we-
And I just want to be real open here. I mean, the people that have proposed this or brought this to the council are my neighbors. And they're all great people. And, you know, and I think it's great that they're trying to establish this. But at the same time, they could have a type-one daycare, which is two houses away from a very popular preschool. And the problem is, is that's a lot of traffic on our only access to that part of our neighborhood. So I'm just been a little concerned about the traffic because we love all of our neighbors. They have great things here. But I'm just wondering why the distinction with type-two. It just seems like if you got a preschool two houses away, that you probably shouldn't have a daycare there. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
I mean, it's just the traffic, because I'm the one that gets to hear about all the traffic. And I try to stay really neutral, because I like all these people. They have good services. I don't want to cause any friction, but it is a problem. And so I think we need to, so my question is, is if it's more than eight students, it's a type-two, so they're going to be a quarter mile away. But if it's less eight or less, which is still 32 pickups by your definition, we allow it. I'm just wondering if we should allow it at all.
Which that could be an option, to bring that threshold a little lower, if it were like one to five or something like that.
I'm just thinking about having two next to each other, which we have, and it's a problem.
Are you talking daycares, you're talking preschools?
Well, they're, but we're lumping them together, so-
Okay, so you have, if someone wants to-
So what I have is a very popular preschool run by some great people. I mean, Kim's brought her family there. And then the people that proposed this with the daycare live two houses in a river diameter down the street, on the same street. So you could have 32 going back and forth to the daycare, plus you could have the preschool at the same time. And like, if we had an emergency in the neighborhood, you could not get a firetruck in. So I'm just wondering if we ought to just, I'm just thinking from a personal thing, maybe look at this a little more carefully. That's my only concern.
One comment, Mayor and Council. This is very much a, what do you want your community to be type of an ordinance, right? And so staff has a proposed one based on the research we did and based on comments from Planning Commission. But this absolutely is up to you, you know? And so if you want to, really, I think what you're suggesting, Councilmember says, is maybe just eliminating type-one and type-two and just say, all of them have to be within that quarter mile, or maybe lowering type-one. And it is absolutely within your prerogative. We have it suggested, just because we've done some research and listened to the Planning Commission, but this is a very, what do you think is appropriate for the community thing? Very council-driven ordinance, so.
Well, it's no problem if they're spread out. I'm 100% supportive. But if they're next door to each other, which I just gave you an example, it's a problem if they're meeting at the same time. So, I don't know.
This is a public hearing, so I think it'd be appropriate-
I'm so sorry.
Oh, do you have a more presentation?
Yes, I do. I'll just go through the rest of it. I'll go quickly. Another, okay, one of the additional requirements is that teacher or instructor for a preschool or in-home instruction must live in the home. That's what I called out where the Planning Commission argued, or wanted, was in favor of, there was no arguing, I promise, was in favor of allowing additional, just because there were opinions of, you know what, I would want my children to be in a preschool that had more teachers and more, more care. So that was that thought. We are also proposing background checks to be required for instructors that have students under 18 years old. Like I said, the state requires that for any childcare license. Anytime it's longer than four hours, they require it. We require background checks for solicitor licenses right now, just because we want to make sure that we have okay people knocking on people's doors, on our residents' doors. And so that was kind of a similar thought process. And then the more than 12 students would only be permitted in commercial zones. And these are the commercial zones that we currently are, we're looking at. Residential professional, daycares and preschools are already permitted there. Professional office, preschools are already permitted, but we're proposing to add daycares just because we think it's a similar use and it's already like consistent with what's already there.
So a question that you bring up, the different zones.
Yes.
So we have a Ridgeview development, and we have the town center. I know it's everything here is only R120, R130, and R140. So this does not apply to the town center or to the Ridge Street Development. Is that my understanding?
That is correct. This would be applicable to our low-density residential zones. That's our staff recommendation to approve. And then, as I said, that Planning Commission call-out, okay, we have two motions. This is without that Planning Commission in favor of addition. And then this is with it, allowing for the additional teachers.
Okay. Anything else?
Not a sec.
Okay. At this time, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the item on the daycare, preschool, and in-home instructors. If there's anyone here that'd like to address this, please come forward. Seeing none, then that was the public hearing. Bring it back to council, either for further discussion.
I have a question. So type-two, nine to 16 children, does that mean if you're a piano teacher that has nine to 16 children, then you need a license?
They'd have to do a background check and have a license. Is that correct?
If you're a, so the background check would be required technically for any piano teacher that was teaching anyone that was a minor. Does that make sense?
I just want to make sure we're clear what we're changing. So we would be requiring a background check for every piano teacher, violin teacher, swim teacher-
Correct.
-in this city. And we would, and they would all need a, like, more than nine students, they would also have to have a license.
That's, so then the license is only required if they were holding one child for longer than four hours. And so if you had a piano teacher that was, had one student that was there for five hours, technically, they would need a childcare license. That's, the only time they would need a license is- That's, the only time they would need a license is if one student was there for longer than four hours. Does that make sense?
That's the state-level license.
The state-level license, sorry.
Are you meaning that or the business license? Um, I'm thinking about a business license.
Okay, so home occupation license, they should already be getting a home occupation license if they're a piano teacher.
So they should be getting a home occupation license if they are caring for how many, one kid?
Technically, isn't it just if they're receiving direct or indirect compensation, isn't that the definition?
Now, one thing that came up with the, in the Plan, we're not talking about family. We're not talking about if they bring them to Grandma and Grandpa's house for them to watch. We're talking about them specifically, they are paying a, a, a non-family member to watch their child or to provide a, a preschool, right?
Or the, well, what she's calling out is also the in-home instruction, where it could be swimming lessons, or music lessons, or dance lessons, just.
So if you have, if you have summer swimming sessions where you have fo- four kids in a class, you can only do, in their half-hour lessons, you can only do that three times a day, cause that would be twelve-plus.
Yes.
I just wanna see how that's gonna affect everybody who already is doing things like this. So everybody would need to get a background check.
Anyone that is teaching them.
Anyone that's teaching them. Everybody would need a business license, but they should get that anyway. And they could only have under eleven students. Piano students, whatever they're teaching.
It can have twelve, yeah, by this. So they could lump it, like, for swimming lessons, for example, they could have twelve in the pool at one time, or they could have twelve thirty-minute lessons with one child, if that makes sense. They can split it up however they want.
Though it is twelve per day, you could have multiple students, as long as, you know, if you had four students that come every day of the week, then you could have more than just the twelve. It's just.
Wait, wait, hold it.
Twelve per day.
No, if you have, it's twelve per day. So what you're saying is that they did a class on Monday, they could have twelve, and they could have a different twelve on.
A different set of twelve. It's, we're not, we're not counting students, we're just, we're trying to limit the impact, not who's there.
So if you have a preschool then, that has two blocks per day, from nine to eleven, twelve to three or whatever, are you saying twelve per day and they can only have six per block?
Or they could have four, four and eight.
Yes, and that's the other call-out, if, if your preschoolers were coming, or hmm, if you had one set of preschoolers coming one day, and then, like, if you have every other day preschools, then technically, they could have twenty-four students, they're just coming on different days. But by this, the maximum would be twelve per day.
Yeah, I'm not for that.
And if you want to increase the number, that's, I mean, so we, we came up with twelve, I think, well, the Planning Commission came up to a twelve, because it was Lehigh's. But I mean, to your point, there, there are many preschools have more than that, or they have blocks or things like that. We're just also trying to, this, the whole point is, home occupation is not supposed to have an impact on the neighborhood, right? Per our code. And so when you do the four trips per day, you realize it does have an impact. But at the same time, as a mother who uses an in-home daycare, right, I absolutely see the value of those and preschools and things like that. So it's just, what are you comfortable with? What level of, um, number of, of, what level of impact are you comfortable with in your residential neighborhoods?
Sure.
Kelly, you said that staff was, um, the background checks was a staff idea, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and, and that idea was, um, like, that it would apply to everybody? Like, I'm just thinking about how much of a burden that is on staff if we're having to do background checks and renew them or whatever on, for every piano teacher.
That's a good point. We don't perform the background checks. It's, it's just a deliverable that we require on the application.
That, that then you have to, I mean, it's another thing for you to have to do and look at, right?
Yeah, but it's on the application.
But, yeah.
And then it's good indefinitely?
We would, yes, we would just do the background check for that initial application. When they do their, uh, annual renewals, we wouldn't require an additional one.
The background checks to protect the student. You, you, you know, we're, we're trying to help that, and that's why they have them, is to, hey, do you have an individual that has a thing? It gets a warning that, you know, and I, and I don't know if legality, if we don't, if we don't do it, I guess we don't have liability. I guess the question, by doing it, do we create any liability?
That's Tim's question.
I'm sorry. Tim, I'm sorry, was that the question you wanted to ask?
It was right on the tip of my.
Uh, no, not particularly. I mean, it's designed to protect people. There's actually a specific immunity provision in the government, we do talk about licensing and issuing permits. I mean, we do the best we can, but we're not a, we're not going out knocking a door to investigating their home.
Let me ask you a quick question. How did a discussion about having daycares, and then of course, we wrapped in preschools, how did it morph into needing background checks on piano teachers? Um, I mean, I think that's kind of ludicrous personally. I mean, our piano teacher, who right now is almost eighty-eight years old, comes to our house, or has done in the past, we go to her house out of the city. Um, I, I guess if you were teaching, my daughter teaches thirty students. She's never in Lehigh, she's never had a background check. You know, it's kind of word of mouth, your neighbors, and you know each other. I can see background checks for preschools and daycares, but for piano teachers, I, I'm just kinda, I've never heard of that.
I think it was just the point of, in-home instruction includes really any and all types of education. And so, yes, you could make background checks specific to just preschools, but it was also the thought of potentially, uh, a resident could wanna have a dance class for six-five-year-olds, you know? And so it was just a better safe-than-sorry, a kind of a precautionary measure that our business license technician wanted to include.
So who does the background check?
There's a state, uh, criminal background check that you can just apply for. It's a, I think, a fifteen-dollar fee, and they'll pull your background check, and you'd get a document, submit it to the city. Or you sign a release saying you can't be shared with the city, and it goes that way.
Do they make you be fingerprinted, like the schools?
Do they what?
Make you be finger, when you volunteer in the schools and you get your background check, you have to be fingerprinted.
We're gonna fingerprint all the piano teachers?
Oh, that's funny.
Well, okay.
Chief knows, I don't know.
Let's realize, the reason for the background check, once again, is to protect the children. I understand the burden upon the teacher. It's if we feel it's important to protect the children, that we, you know, and, and I think we have to be careful. Traditionally, we may be looking to say that there's one gender that's been always teaching the piano, but if it's a male gender, we're gonna have a background, female, we're not. I'm just saying, that's where I think we get caught in that stereotype going, well, this, this type of teacher's not had a problem, but this type of teacher's had. And it, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to advocate that we have to have a background check, but I'm just going, I can see the safety in it for the, the student. I understand it's a pain for the teacher. But you have your scout leaders here. Every one of those scout leaders have to have a background check. If you're religious and any kids are under young, younger, you're supposed to do some training. I'm just saying, it, it's becoming it a part of our environment.
Dude, why doesn't somebody, who wants to start a bless, should we start a business and we're just gonna do background checks? So I only have to do it once for all the twelve places that I have to do one?
Oh, there's, there's a lot of businesses that probably do that, it's probably.
Yeah, we should do that. And then, cause I've had them ten times.
Chief, let me ask you, uh, uh, Chief Williams, this background check, is it something that you see that's beneficial in your profession, or is it something that it's, I guess just what your, your experience has been?
So over the years, things have changed, and you're, you're discussing those changes now. We've seen a lot more businesses or occupations that require some type of licensure. And a part of that licensure comes with a, a, a fingerprinting and a background check. Now, we'll do the fingerprinting at our place, and we'll send them with the cards, and we'll submit them to, as was alluded to by Rob, to the Bureau of Criminal Identification. And they'll delete the background check up there. But we've done everything from schoolteachers to missionaries to individuals that are applying for a, a permit to, you know, something that requires the licensure or fingerprinting of the, the persons applying for the, for that particular license.
We do a background check on our employees here. I was going, every employee in the city has a background check.
Part of the frustration is, if I do, if I'm fingerprinted to be a schoolteacher, and I decided I wanna be an airline pilot, I have to do fingerprints all over again. If I decide I wanna be a, a, a law enforcement officer, I have to do fingerprints all over again. So I, I've, I've seen people that have been fingerprinted a dozen times for different types of anything and everything. So they don't, not one, not one is complete, and, and once you're done, you're, one, once you've done it once, you've done it all. And every time you apply for a license, you have to do it all over.
So is the background check also fingerprinting, or just doing a, I guess it's based on?
They are separate, but sometimes they do combine them.
So council, let's start kinda maybe focusing on what, do you wanna move forward with any, any, uh, amendment here at daycares, preschools, in-home instruction?
And I will say too, you know, so we, we've provided a, a potential ordinance, right? If there are, you know, wha- whatever things you want to change, rather than trying to draft code tonight, we're happy with you just giving us, but I only want, but I want to eliminate type-one and type-two. Or I want to allow up to sixteen children per day, or whatever that is. And we'll amend the code with that, um, change, so you don't have to draft the code itself. Just tell us what changes you want to see.
I, I have a quick question. That's okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I understand Scott's concern regarding traffic and how this could cause some problems. Is there any way to rate the daycare center according to traffic patterns and loads and the, and the rating of the road?
That's what Orem was doing, where they were saying that they need to be by a collector road. That's where, it, one, only adjacent to collectors are arterial roads.
Because I can see Scott's point in that particular road he's referring to, and say that in this area, this is a rating number-one area, whatever you wanna call it, is that they're limited to eight students in thirty-two segments per day. So, or if it is by an arterial strator collector or something that is larger, like, let's say it's about a SR ninety-two, then they could have twelve or sixteen, whatever the maximum is, cause that is a rated-three area, for example.
There's more access.
Correct.
Yeah.
They're not driving through a, a whole neighborhood.
Well, yeah, and I just think we have to be careful, cause we, council after council, we have people coming in complaining about these home businesses, and the main problem is the traffic. So it seems like, it, it doesn't make sense. I support this idea of preschools and daycares, but it doesn't make sense then to create another problem. Cause I mean, I can think just several times this year, and the whole issue with these home businesses was the traffic. So I think we just have to be careful. I, my concern, you can have daycare caring, if we can go up to sixteen, you know, as Councilwoman Riddella says. But I think you gotta be careful not having them next door to each other, which, you know, I've given you an example in my neighborhood, and it will be a problem.
So are you good with, um, if we eliminate type-one and type-two and just say that they all have to be within a quarter, they can't be within a quarter mile, regardless of what type it is?
I, I could support that.
So why, why you just mentioned doing something, not worrying about type-one, type-two, you're saying they're all together, they can have up twelve or sixteen? Is it, and that, but they have to be a quarter mile separation for each other?
And I'm with Kim, I would lean towards sixteen. I would also like the Planning Commission's idea about parking and a traffic pattern, and wouldn't mind if somebody who doesn't live in the home is coming to work there, if they have a parking spot.
But you wanna have.
The homeowner should be there too.
You wanna be home occupied, but they can hire a care, another.
Yeah, we have one.
Up to one?
Just the thing with the preschool, when I think about it, so if you're saying sixteen per day, it's still an issue because most preschools do two blocks, an AM preschool, a PM preschool, sixteen kids in a class, so that's thirty-two a day. Um, I mean, from personal experience. So when you just say sixteen a day, now you're making it so that only eight kids can be in a preschool a day, and, and that's unheard of.
And I just, now, let's kinda not take this big picture. We just had Viewpoint come in, and I believe their traffic count was increasing, uh, and sometimes by thirty an hour. And yet, where's, you know, I'm just saying, when we talk, start talking about traffic, we're going, okay, we're starting to say we're gonna have these sixteen kids that have all the, you know, here, here they're gonna have.
Twice a day.
Sixty-four, so now we're, you know, a hundred and twenty-eight trips.
A hundred and twenty-eight trips.
And yet, if this was Viewpoint, we'd be saying, no! I, I'm just saying, this, we gotta, we gotta keep, we gotta keep it in, in the realm of what we've been doing. And, you know, we've said, we're not even gonna have a connected road because of that, but yet we're, we're starting to do it in the daycare.
Yeah, I, I just think we have to be consistent.
So you just want sixteen a day total? Well, I'm just saying, so then all at-home preschools. So, so then all at-home preschools would essentially eliminate half of their, uh, children that are attending. And so now, you're saying that.
Do preschools meet every day?
I mean, Ms. Molly's does, yeah, Monday through Friday. Two blocks a day, sixteen kids each. I think the younger class has fourteen kids each. But I'm just saying, you're gonna open up a can of worms by essentially eliminating half the preschools in our city. So then what are we gonna do?
Do we have a lot of preschools? I'm not, I don't know.
Absolutely we do.
I bet.
I have one four doors, four doors down from me.
So are they, how are they functioning right now, Kelly? Are they conforming, or do they have business permits, or are they non-conforming where they don't have a permit?
We have some that have permits. I'm sure there may be some that don't get business licenses, um.
So the business licenses, they were granted, that they, they didn't look at the number? So what, what we're currently at, once again, there's no number limit currently?
They did provide a number in their business license application. Um, at the time, I mean, for example, our, one of our, well, our largest preschool in the city, um, they, at the time, were required to get the signatures of everyone within, well, heavens. It was probably a different radius at the time. It could be between two-hundred-and-fifty and five-hundred feet. I don't know exactly what it was, but they got the signatures of everyone. And that allowed them to get their license. Over the years, we have had complaints. Candace told me that they, um, that she had the applicant or the owner of the preschool um, work with the police to have a, um, a traffic flow plan essentially, to try to lessen the amount of U-turns that were happening in front of, um, properties. And so in the past, when people have brought complaints, we've tried to work with the residents to come up with a way to mitigate some impact. Um, but as far as the people that are, are compliant with the home occupation licenses that have already been approved, would be grandfathered in technically, if they already had an approved license. Um, but, that's, I don't know if that answered your question, but.
So in our neighborhood, the deans, and they're great people, I'm, I'm trying not to offend anybody, but, uh, so, uh, I guess what you're saying, Kim, is they have thirty-two students there a day.
That's, that's what's on their original license as well.
They would be grandfathered in.
Yeah, but I mean, you're just not gonna find a preschool that has only eight kids in a class. It's not, it's not feasible.
I'm not sure why it isn't feasible, but I've not had a, we had our kids in preschool, and they were eight kids or less in the groups. But I, I don't run preschools, so I don't know how they work.
And I, and I understand, it's, and I think as a council, you gotta be careful. Is it our responsibility to make sure that it's the feasibility or the profitability of that preschool?
I mean, I guess at the same time, though, is it our responsibility to be able to allow, uh, our residents to have a preschool that they can be able to take their kids to, without having to travel thirty miles away?
Well, I think that's an important thing, but they then add impact because of the cars. That, that's what we're trying to.
So then it comes down to Erin's question, what kind of community do we want?
I think that's a good question. Council, where, I mean, are you, there was a proposal talking about getting rid of type-one, type-two, and going up to sixteen kids per daycare. Is there a feeling to go lower, lar- you know, larger, what's kind of on the daycares?
So the, the, the Planning Commission, though, is lumping preschools and daycares in the same regulations.
That's the state.
State does that.
Yes. This proposal is, uh, daycares and then in-home, uh, in-home instruction with residential preschools included in there.
And that might be why you need to have a type-one and type-two, because if you start getting daycare, they are staying a lot longer and have a bigger impact on that neighborhood.
Again, the type-one and type-two is something that Lehigh did, so that's just.
So what if you, I'm just trying to see a compromise here. So like on our preschool, you have sixteen kids there for four hours. How long is preschool?
I mean.
I mean, you have two sessions.
It has to be under four hours, three and a half hours.
Yeah, so there's two and a half hours for younger kids, three hours for older kids, so two and a half to three and a half hours.
Can you times it out, kids per hour? I mean, if you have a daycare and you have the kids there for ten hours, and there are sixteen kids, that's like a hundred and sixty kid hours, does that make sense? But if you have two sessions of preschools with sixteen each time, but they're only there two and a half to three or four hours, kid hour-wise, it's actually similar or less. Does that make sense? Am I making any sense?
I bet traffic, it's, it's a higher traffic count.
Oh, I know. It's just, you know, I think they're, they're great things, but I know if we had, when that preschool's going on, if we needed an emergency vehicle to come in our neighborhood, they could not get in when people are coming and going. And I'm not there when they're coming and going, rarely, but I just have, I don't know, it's hard to deal with it.
So, once again, Kelly, you're saying daycares and preschool by law have to be lumped together?
That's just how they regulate it, it's just anything-
We could separate and say daycare, they, they have to be less than eight, preschool can be up to sixteen.
Yes, we can, we can put a max on the number of children, but essentially, when we do that, we can't put a max on number of caregivers, just because it wouldn't, it could possibly not be state code, that's just-
You can't say one caregiver per X number of children?
No, because they have specific regulations for ages, where if you have two, two children from zero to eighteen months, or if you have four, you have to have two caregivers, you have to have one caregiver per zero to eighteen months. I'm just, oh my goodness, I can't even speak right now. Basically, they have it split up into ages, and once you hit certain thresholds, you have to have an additional caregiver.
And how, what, how is the difference between a daycare and a preschool defined? Is it that they're receiving instruction?
It's that preschool is less than four hours.
Less than-
So, I mean, is that common with daycare? Will most of the kids stay over four hours?
Yes.
I mean, we, we could differentiate, so okay, daycare up to eight, you know, as long as they're staying over four hours. And I guess that would what, what would classify daycares, because they're going to stay over the four hours. And then maybe you look, you look at the daycare, I mean, is there, is there any indication you want to have daycare with more than eight?
I would love to know what Sarah thinks.
Sarah, are you on the line?
Yes, I sure am, with me, certainly. You know, I think we, that we need to have the, 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 in all, in all of our communities. I think if someone kind of extends that to me or preschool, that process would be very impactful, so I'm worried about that. On the other hand, I think that we have to allow the preschool, uh, caring families, because people are in need of that. Our children have to be of that. So I'm a little bit in a quandary, what to do here to satisfy those that.
I guess I'm, so Rob, we could say daycare, we allow up to eight, and then they, we could say no more. I mean, is it common to have a lot more kids than eight in a daycare?
I'm personally against that question too.
If you view daycare, is it common that that daycare person inside the home has more than eight children?
My daycare does. She deals with older, she, most of them are slightly older children, it's eight plus depending on how many older kids there are.
Yeah, it depends on their ages.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't solve Scott's, what he said about having a daycare right next to a preschool.
Well then, you can lump and say they have to be within a quarter mile separation.
Yeah, I think the quarter mile's unfortunately going to have to happen, because you have two of them together, especially if you're going to allow a lot more people.
So then the neighbor two doors down can't even have one child in their daycare?
Well, I don't know how you can have a daycare allowing them to have eighteen to sixteen in the daycare, running at the same time you've got thirty-two kids two houses away with all that traffic coming in. There's act, I mean, and I don't want to be quoted on this, but there was one neighbor that moved because of the preschool, and, and there are other people that put up cones and from the, so it's a wonderful service. And, and I understand, and I love these people, but it's just, the traffic's always a problem. And I wish we could figure out some way to do it, because, I mean, that was the problem with Alpine Storage, and it's the problem with all these home businesses, is the traffic. And so we've just got to be sensitive to the neighbors. I mean, it's the same thing with the Fun Run, it's the traffic and the congestion. And so, you know, I just, somehow you have to balance it, and I'm not Solomon, so I think it's a hard thing to do. But, because I can understand both sides of the argument, but I don't know how you can have a daycare with sixteen kids, people coming in and out two houses away from a preschool with thirty-two. It's just not going to work.
So Scott's talking about the quarter, is, is everyone in agreement if we're looking at some policy that they, the quarter mile, or is there a different feeling in the need to have the quarter mile? Can we, as we start looking, getting a motion, you know, getting ready to, then if we don't want to have a motion tonight, we can have it crafted and brought back. Is the quarter mile a reasonable requirement, or is that one that you're going, no, I'd rather not have?
I think it's reasonable.
What's the other council feel?
I think it's reasonable. Let me, I can kind of show you what it would look like.
Okay, hold on, Sarah just said she thought it was reasonable also?
That's correct.
I do.
Okay. So we, we now know that that's going to be part of a motion, is that the quarter mile radius is going to be part of some type of motion in there. Now let's start focusing on the, the daycare number or the preschool number. Do we want those two the same? Do we want preschool and daycare all lumped together, or do we want to break out and only talk about daycares, and break out and talk only about preschool? What's the recommendation?
You know, I, I could support up to sixteen in a daycare, and I can see where Kim's coming from. I think if you have two sessions, a preschool, that you could go up to sixteen in each session.
Now, you said daycare sixteen and preschool sixteen?
Well, sixteen in a session, isn't that what they run?
Well, daycare's going to be there, probably, they're, they could be up to over four hours.
Right, they're going to be there longer than four hours, so sixteen. But you could have two sessions of sixteen that's there for lesser hours. It just seems to me like you have kids per hour.
Kids there for eight hours, but it, it's sessions, that's it.
Yeah, sessions, it's kind of kids per hour, in my mind, that's where I look at, but.
So are we talking daycare and preschool together?
No, I mean, daycare and preschool are different things, I guess.
How about we just now talk daycare? On daycare, what would we like to see? We know the quarter mile radius is going to be there with the daycare. Do we want to have, what's the number of kids for a daycare?
Kelly, what are the other state regulations surrounding a daycare? Because it has a limit on the number of kids, and that includes your own kids, right? Their, your own children are included in the sixteen? And is there another rule about size or square feet per kid?
Yes, they do have regulations for square feet per kid. They also include your backyard, though, in that square footage, if they're going to be outside. I don't, I can't tell you exactly what the square footage is per child without looking it up. They regulate the children to caregivers ratio. They, as far as, okay. If you have a daycare on a commercial property, you have to get a commercial daycare license no matter how many children are there. But if it's in a residential zone, it's just residential childcare license. And they regulate the children to caregivers ratio, like I explained, it's really specific to the ages. They do require training hours for their caregivers. They also require the background checks, including background checks for anyone in the home that's over twelve years old.
This is daycare state requirement.
This is for daycares, well, any, any care for children that's more than four hours, they're childcare. So if you have teens in the home, they also have to get background checks. They regulate safety and injuries as well as food, if they're giving food. And transportation, if transportation is provided, like I said, sometimes they'll drive them to and from school. And, and then they also go into medical records, and like I said, yeah, they will conduct annual inspections to make sure that these are all met. Obviously, this is a general, I didn't-
And then Kelly, so for example, with my family, if I was doing an in-home daycare, I would also need a background check for my husband and two of my kids.
That's correct. The state would require that.
Okay.
That's a state requirement, so what's the number on daycare that you feel comfortable with in having in the Highland community?
Wait, one more question, so does the state have a regulation that requires square footage to child ratio? Bigger house, more kids, smaller house, less kids?
Yes, but Candace knows this a lot better than me, but to what I remember, it's, it's not a large amount of square footage. And like I said, they'll include background, or backyard square footage in that calculation. So you could have a super small house, but you can count your backyard in it, so it's considered enough square footage.
A condo or apartment that don't have a backyard, isn't it?
Yeah, correct. They won't be able to include it.
Any recommendations on number for daycare? Eight, twelve, sixteen?
Not sixteen for a daycare.
So we bring it down?
I thought you wanted it sixteen.
For preschool, that's a lot.
Are you, this, the, right here, the planning commission says for type one, eight and less, a type two, now type two-
Twelve.
Yeah, I'd say their type two was because they wanted to have it within a quarter mile.
Yeah.
So on their proposal, it would be twelve, up to twelve children if it's a quarter mile.
Okay, I'll support that.
Okay, twelve children, everyone, okay, I heard from Kim, Scott.
Twelve.
Anyone else?
Twelve.
That's what's-
There was one additional difference, which was type two, you had to provide off-street parking spaces. And the planning commission actually had a long debate whether to require that for type one. And the thought was, if you have, you want to allow, they wanted to allow smaller daycares to operate that don't have very many kids, where you can just kind of drop off, where you don't have to do a lot of costly improvements to your yard, you can just have, you know, I'm just taking care of six kids, I don't need to put in a new driveway or a new parking area behind my house in order to facilitate that.
Why wouldn't you just have more off-street parking if you hire people to run the daycare? I think you need off-street parking for them, because they're going to be there all the time.
So it's one off-street here, so we could keep that in type one and type two?
Per caregiver.
One off-street parking per caregiver required?
Yeah, but you're saying it, making that for both of the types.
Yeah, I would get rid of type one until I just have all the same tire.
I don't think there's any difference at this point.
Yeah, there, there's no difference.
Is everyone okay with that?
You wanted to apply the quarter mile to the smaller daycares as well?
The whole thing, every, for, everything will be quarter mile, it will apply to daycare and applies to the preschools, right? Now let me ask you, is daycare quarter mile and preschool's different? And that's a different quarter mile? Or can a daycare, if they're there, the preschool has to stay quarter mile from the daycare?
Well, I, I think we're still coming lumping it together, I think they just need to be a quarter mile apart, and that's just for traffic.
That's, we included in that provision of the quarter mile radius from another daycare or preschool with that same number of children when we were dividing it into types, so you could come up with a different number for preschool. But we called that out specifically, recognizing the trip numbers.
Right, okay, council, are you stating that the quarter mile radius applies? If it's a daycare, a preschool also cannot come within the quarter mile? Is that what we're also, would be part of the ordinance or the vote? You said the quarter mile, I guess, but Sarah?
I think we need to make it the quarter mile regardless of daycare or preschool, or in the rest of the town where there's weird and heavy traffic. So I think it's reasonable, if you have a daycare, if you want to open up a preschool, it needs to be at least a quarter mile.
Is the rest of the council supportive of that?
So that would be, you would remove the number of children for preschool and just say quarter mile radius from any other daycare or preschool?
I guess I just have a hard time, because if one person wants to just watch one kid.
Is that daycare though?
At a daycare, that's two doors down from a preschool, I just don't see a big problem with that.
Yeah, that's a good point, I agree.
Then you need to have, you want to do type one, type two?
That's where the type one, type two comes into play.
But is that a licensed daycare if you're taking care of one or two kids?
Yeah, well, yeah, according to us, you have to do a background check just for one kid, for any number of kids.
Maybe that's why they did the type one and the type two?
I like the type one, type two, because then, I mean, sorry.
Not that I-
Well, it's, it's fine if it's not near and approved.
Oh, no, I mean, you could, you could say the type one is up to here, and then, and then anything quarter mile, I mean, you could say up to two or three kids, and then anything over comes a quarter mile.
Yeah, that's bingo.
It's fairly low.
I just, I'm thinking in my neighborhood, we have daycares, I have a daycare three doors down from me. I never see any cars there, I have a preschool a few doors down from me.
How, how, how many people go though? Do you have thirty-two and-
Yeah, thirty-two, two sets, three, uh-huh.
Okay, can you go back to the type one, type two? So they set up to eight, maybe we say type one's only up to four children.
Four.
And then you bring your type two in, and the type two, it goes to four to twelve on the type two?
Would be five to twelve.
A five to twelve, yeah, you're five to twelve, and, and but it's the type two then that has the quarter mile radius, because that's where the greater impact's starting to happen. Is that what we're starting to talk about?
Yes.
Okay, is that-
Yep.
Scott, you?
I like that.
Okay. So now we're back to the type one does not have the quarter mile radius, but it's only up to four children. Type two is five up to twelve?
Yeah.
Okay, and this is only in daycares, but they have to be a quarter mile radius away. We're also talking about the one street, off-street parking for any caregiver, correct?
For all, yes.
For all, type one and type two.
Yeah, it doesn't matter the type, correct? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, now this is only applying to daycares.
Correct.
Okay.
Could you two mitigate that impact, like in Scott's neighborhood, for example? I mean, I'm making it more complicated, Kelly, I'm sorry, but, like, if we're saying you can have a daycare and a preschool, or if the daycare only has a few kids, can you stagger drop-off times or something?
That's one of those things that we probably base it on the application, where if we were getting complaints, we would try to work with the applicant to do that, I, I don't know how we would codify it though.
Like if there's one in his neighborhood that drops off at nine and picks up at twelve?
Well, you know, I, I think those are nice ideas, but there's no way you can enforce that.
You're not going to enforce, I, I agree with Scott, you're going to have a real hard time.
I don't know how, it'd be nice to do, but you'd never enforce it, but maybe we just ought to move on, because this is a lost cause for me.
Well, no, okay, so the daycare, I think we've gotten daycare put together, because we have the state code as a, now let's go to preschool. Okay, preschool have, this planning commission recommended up to max of twelve students per day. Is the council in, in agreement of that? Is there a different number? I mean, you could say twelve students up for a four-hour period maximum, up to certain, up to, up, if you wanted to go up to twenty-four for another four hours. Does that make sense? You could not have the impact so heavy at one time? Or, I mean, is everyone want to keep it the twelve? Are they okay going up to twenty-four, or sixteen, or thirty-two? What's the number there for the preschool?
I mean, I'd just say sixteen, and then in two different sessions. You can't have thirty-two kids at the same time, but sixteen in one session, sixteen in another session. Sixteen no longer than four hours, and then another session sixteen no longer than four hours.
Oh, you're thinking, I was thinking sixteen and-
Both? Eight and eight, or, or just sixteen total?
Eight in the morning, eight in the afternoon, eight on Tuesday afternoon, eight on Tuesday morning.
I mean, I just, I mean, all three daycare, all three preschools my kids have attended have all had sixteen kids in a session.
That's so long ago, I can't remember, I did kids then.
I mean, it was last year for me. I think it was sixteen for the older-
We have to be careful, we're just trying to look at, one, I mean, what's the impact we want in our neighborhoods? I mean, that's, I understand that maybe what the teacher wants, what do we want as impact in our neighborhoods?
Well, it's not what the teacher wants, it's what is supply and demand. I mean, I had to get on a waiting list when my kid, you know, was in utero just to get into a preschool in Highland City. And so then if you eliminate, you know, half the preschools, I mean, you know, you better start getting on a waiting list when you start dating someone.
Okay, so on preschools, what's, I mean, Kim feels one way, I've heard council, other council feeling different. Sarah, what's your recommendation on preschools?
I like what Kim was saying, I think sixteen at a time and have two different sessions, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. I remember that, you know, when we were talking, that's going to be almost sixty-four cars in the morning and sixty-four cars in the afternoon. At least that's what our numbers are showing.
Well, that's coming and going, so it's really thirty-two.
Yeah, it's not sixty-four cars, it's one hour.
Not cars, but trips, yeah. What, you know, Scott, Brittany, where are you at on that, on the numbers?
It's hard to say, because my kids were always in preschools that had fewer than twelve, they were always up to ten.
My kids didn't have more than twelve kids either, but-
My kids went to preschools that had much less, too, so.
Not that I want to, not that I enjoy continuing items, but a thought I had that maybe we should have done ahead of time, council, is we could cert, you know, look through our records to see how many kids are in our current preschools or what they've told us at this point. Call around to local preschools, I don't know, I mean, Kelly, I know you've looked at that, do you have those numbers off the top of your head?
I, I know one of them has thirty-two, and that's the one that's been here the longest.
How many preschools do we have? I mean, here we're trying to regulate, we have five since.
Six.
Six. And there's one, one that we know that has probably total of thirty-two students, being our largest, but we don't know what- And there's one, one that we know that has probably total of thirty-two students, being our largest, but we don't know what the others. Do we have any indication of what the other five might have?
It would probably be an average between sixteen to that thirty-two. I, I remember looking at them and being like, wow, I can't believe that these were approved under these requirements. That's kind of the feeling I had while looking through all the applications, um, but, like I said, they were getting signatures of all their neighbors, and so I'm sure city staff was just like, well, I guess if the city neighbors are okay with, or the neighbors are okay with it, then.
So, so question is, council, do you want this to come back after maybe they call those other five preschools?
I, I, I would like to continue this, and maybe have the staff do a little more research on it and, and that. I mean, it was a pretty contentious thing, the planning commission, and, you know, and all of a sudden we're doing background checks on the piano teacher, it just seems like it's kind of morphed a little bit. Um, I'd like to think about it more and have a little more information.
So, Scott is, is that a?
Well, I, I move that we continue this, uh, with stipulations.
Now, Scott, make an motion to continue, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussion before we need to go to vote on that?
If you could just articulate, so we wanna, uh, what, what, um, what research you need to, you want staff to do, so looking at numbers.
You, you mentioned maybe Kelly could call the other five, get an understanding of how many students they have. Kelly, maybe you can look through even some of those permits that have been approved to see what, what was that? And maybe what stipulations, why they were approved, approved that way.
Right, I'd like more information, then I'd like to understand how, when we pass this overall ordinance, how it affects exactly, how it affects preschools, daycares, and I'd, I'd really like to know how it makes piano teachers get background check. I just kind of like to understand how one ordinance is going to do all of that.
Well, and I think what, what Scott might be asking, I'd like to, do we, do other cities require a piano teacher, a swim instructor, to do a background check? Does that make sense? What, what's, why are some of those, uh, other cities doing with this background check?
I mean, it's not a bad idea, I'm just wondering why it's part of this ordinance, I, I, you know, I just like to understand that.
I think it got pulled in because it, was it from the planning commission?
Planning commission.
No, that was, it was our business license technician, the one that approves the business licenses or processes them. Uh, she thought it would be a necessity, because the state doesn't regulate anything for any care of children under four hours. And so just the idea of we're allowing adults to take care of children without any regulation.
So we need to decide if we want to regulate under the four hours. I think that's what the question is, and, and, you know, and just kind of go from there. Essentially, our arts council actually has to go get a background check, there were some things they had, I just, you know, it's just interesting on.
Kelly, is there a state database of, um, daycare providers that can be sorted out by city?
I can look into it, I don't know off the top of my.
You know what, I will, I'm gonna look into that.
Okay.
I'm gonna take.
Okay, does staff have, do you have the information to be able to bring this back?
Unless there's anything else you want us to be looking at in the meantime. So the number counts, right, off of our current licensees, and maybe even we just do some Googling and see who has a preschool.
And then we also want to know about background checks.
Right.
Is something that, under the four hours.
You wanna look into existing that don't have licenses?
You know, I'd say let's do whatever we can, right? Look at our current licenses, and then if we can just, I don't know if they'll answer our calls or, or answer our questions. If we Google them and find, hey, you're not, or you're in Highland but don't have a license, you know, we wanna start with that, but, right.
And I'd like to have a little better grasp of how we're gonna educate people, because if we put this ordinance in place, then we need to educate people, if you have a daycare, you have, they should need to come get a business license, these are the regulations. If you teach piano lessons and so many students a day, you're gonna have to come get a business license and, and all that stuff. Because I don't think most people bother.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion of continuance that we need to vote on, is there anything else before we vote on that the staff needs?
No, I think we're good to go.
So I have a motion by Scott, it was second by Brittany. Sarah, we're gonna go to you first for the vote for continuance.
We're, sorry, there's no voting.
Okay. Kim? Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
We, that passes four to zero at this vote, uh, council member Tim Ball was not present.
There are four licensed daycare providers in Highland.
Okay, we will now move on to item number five, which is also a public hearing. This is a text amendment, the park and planter strips. Kelly, you also have that.
All right, thank you, mayor, and members of the council. Um, on the eighteenth, we had a short communication item, uh, discussing our current regulations for park strips, and, and something that we don't currently have, the council discussed, uh, just that it was consistent with what we were already doing, and so it was just kind of seen as a cleanup of our development code. So section three, six, two, one, and our park or planter strips and, and our regu- um, supplementary regulations. It details the types of landscaping permitted in the park strip, it goes through a list of, uh, class one trees and allowing zere-scaping, et cetera. And as we discussed in the other city council meeting, staff noticed that it does not specify whose responsibility is to maintain the park strip, um. And so the proposed amendment was to add that, uh, the park strip shall be landscaped and maintained by the adjacent property owner, using the traditional and/or zere-scape methods. And, uh, our appropriate public hearing notices were sent out for this amendment. Um, planning commission held their public hearing on Tuesday. They also, after discussion, uh, thought that the existing wording was not, um, clear enough. They were questioning, it, it didn't necessarily say that, well, specify next to which sidewalk, and so they wanted to, um, call out, okay, being the property owner directly adjacent to that sidewalk, that we're referring to, the sidewalk directly adjacent to their property. So it's saying that you can't go, you can't, um, landscape your neighbor's park strip that's in front of their sidewalk. It's your sidewalk, if that makes sense. Um, the planning commission also, um, one of the commissioners is really involved in landscaping types. Um, and so there was a lot of discussion regarding the tree types, and, and we as staff didn't necessarily feel prepared to, um, do an amendment, we didn't have, we hadn't completed any research as far as the tree, uh, as far as the tree types go. And so, um, the planning commission just included a stipulation that staff would bring back the list of tree types and other vegetation back to the planning commission to be reviewed at a future date. That was stipulation of their approval, and we're just bringing it to the council just to, uh, basically receive your blessing in a way to, uh, look further into that tree, tree list. And then this is the proposed motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just, I want to clarify a thing, by park strip, we're usually talking about the little strip between the sidewalk and the curb in front of a person's home, because you're gonna have corner lots, but many of those corner lots are on parkways. So I was just thinking, when the planning commissioners lives on a corner, he maintains his park strip in front. He actually goes over and maintains part of the parkway too. I see him out there mowing all the time, I don't know why he does that, but he does. But, uh, so, we're talking about park strips, not the parkways next to you, right?
When you're on a corner lot and you have a standard park strip, it is your responsibility to do what's on the side. Um, but if it's a parkway detail, with our city standard, we, as the city, maintain parkway details, which is that twenty-nine-foot meandering sidewalk that we have, does that make sense? And so corner lots that have the four-foot wide park strip along the side that abuts the street, it is that property owner's responsibility to maintain.
We, we have Kim that has a house on the corner, that has a property on the west and property on the north. They're to maintain both that park things.
Correct.
If we have a person that lives on a corner of S, or Alpine Highway, they're only to maintain in front of their house, not the parkway detail on the west side of their house.
That is correct.
That's, I've watched what we're passing tonight.
Right.
Right, I just want to make sure it's clear when we tell people, because, you know, some people have park strips on both sides, some people have a parkway, park strip, I just, maybe when people come in or buy a house, somehow we ought to just educate.
For the record, this time, I want to note that council member Sarah Peterson is now off the line, and so she is not present. And Tim, council member Tim Ball is also not current. So we have a quorum with us, with three being here, there, just to make sure.
Okay.
If that comes up. So with that, this is a, a public hearing, is there anything else you need to go over, Kelly?
No.
If it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and open up for public hearing, and we'll bring it back to council. Well, at this time, open up the text amendment for the park or planter strips for public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward, please go, come forward this time. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Wesley Warren, Highland resident. Um, I just had a question, uh, something to consider, yes. Um, is there an existing list of trees that are approved or not approved for strips?
Yes, the best references in the municipal code, actually, are municipal and development codes do not match, and so that's another reason why we would need to look into it, but.
Yeah, I know that when we were putting in landscaping, um, our landscaper did go with one of the approved trees, and it's already like, the roots are kind of messing with the sidewalks and stuff, so. So, I did, but I, but I remembered in talking to him that he had, you know, run it by the city, and it was approved and stuff, and so I didn't know if.
So we might want to clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
Just that.
Thank you for your input, Wes. Is there anyone else that'd like to come address the council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we will close the public hearing, bring it back to council either for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the city council through the proposed amendment to section three dash six, two, one, park or planter strips, to clarify that the maintenance of park strips is a responsibility of the property owner directly adjacent to the sidewalk, as recommended by the planning commission with the following stipulation. One, the staff will bring the list of tree types and other vegetation back to the planning commission to be reviewed at a future date.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
That passes three to zero. We will now move on.
Or did Sarah just accidentally drop?
No, she had to leave at, at nine o'clock tonight.
Oh, that's right.
So she went, she texted me and says, I'm sorry, I need to leave, so I just wanted to make sure that was, know that she's not.
I had forgotten that, thank you. Uh, council member Ball had to slip out for a family matter, but will be back shortly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number six, which is also a public hearing, and a text amendment to the sewer lift station. So sewer lift stations, Kelly? Andy, I thought I'd see you in there.
I mean, Andy, did you want to add? Basically saying what Andy said a couple weeks ago, anyways.
Carrying the big lift.
Good one.
If you're doing the big lift, uh, we know who does the lifting, no.
Can't tell, yeah. Um, October eighteenth, there was a communication item that was presented by our city engineer, Andy Spencer. Uh, he presented just generally the substantial cost of maintaining and replacing sewer lift stations that are owned by the city. Um, he also expressed the desire to prohibit new development from being served by publicly owned sewer lift stations, and the council did direct staff to draft that amendment. Um, it just, a little bit of background to understand which sewer lift stations we do have. Currently, we have three, the Pheasant Hall, well, isn't Victor View gone? Dang it, I missed one. What's the last one? Highland Hollow.
Oh, Highland Hollow.
That's by the encroachments, yes, you're very right, okay. That's okay. So we have Pheasant Hollow, Greens at the Highlands, that's Caddy Lane. Oh.
Dry Creek.
Isn't that Dry Creek? There are two along Dry Creek. Sorry, y'all, there.
There are two.
Okay, there are two along Dry Creek.
Are there two in the Dry Creek area? There's just one in the bottom.
So, this, the city has one in the Dry Creek area, and the Tempanogus Special Services District has one in the Dry Creek area. What we would call the Dry Creek area are kind of, uh, um, by six thousand west, maybe, say it that way, Dry, Dry Creek by six thousand west, and Tem- Tempanogus has one right where Dry Creek, uh, passes through SR ninety-two. Um, we don't maintain TSSDs, I'm just asking, telling you how many lift stations are there. And then we have one that's farther down on Dry Creek, if you will, and Highland Hollow, right adjacent to, um, Lehigh's twelve hundred east. In, in the big deal, so we, we maintain four. So we maintain Pheasant Hollow, the Greens of the Highlands, Dry Creek, what we call the Dry Creek Lift Station, and then Highland Hollow Lift Station. So we have four active, we used to have five, but with the construction project at the Victor View subdivision, we eliminated that one. So now we just have it down to four. Those are the four that we maintain, and then there is one maintained by Tempanogus that's over by the new Dry Creek Lake.
So, so Cat, uh, Andy, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Part of this, it says that the sanitary sewer pipeline facilities there are, or will be owned and maintained by the city for all new subdivisions, they'll be operated by a gravity flow. So we have some subdivisions that are up by that Beacon Hills area, the Perry Homes area, then we have some other property. Are you saying if they come in, they would naturally gravity flow down into a lift station? You're saying they cannot go to the, a lift station, because that would be a new subdivision?
That wasn't the intent of the verbiage. The in, the intent of the verbiage was to say that, uh, you can't cause an additional lift station to be created. So like, the Beacon Hills area, it all flows to an existing lift station, right? Um, and so the idea was that, or the concept behind the verbiage was that, uh, if your subdivision flows to a gravity line, and that gravity line ultimately flows to a lift station, uh, which is what happens up there, and it's one of our existing ones, that's okay. If you propose a subdivision that says, oh, city, I want to now give you another lift station, so now instead of maintaining four, city, you get to maintain a fifth one, that would not be okay. What we're trying to do is not take on any additional lift stations, if you will.
So, Andy, have you looked pretty carefully in the last areas of the city that could be developed? I'm thinking about the Longhorn property over there, could that be all taken care of by gravity?
That's all, that's all gravity. The, the only area that, that we're aware of right now that, uh, couldn't be taken care of by gravity is if there was a development proposal for, uh, the large depression in the gravel pit. Um, where the gravel pit is, or the, the really deep hole at the gravel pit, um, that can't be served by gravity. Um, other than that, all the other areas that are in the city, even though they're, they're vacant, like the Longhorn property and some of the properties up in the Beacon Hills area, they would all be served either through just our, our gravity lines or through our existing lift stations. We don't believe this kind of isolates, uh, any of those, any of those properties, um, with the exception of the very large hole with gravel.
We're just trying not to add any new lift stations.
We don't want to add any new lift stations, we're saying, so if, if, if it can go to a gravity line, which then ultimately flows to one of our existing, uh, lift stations, fair game. That's okay to develop. If you're proposing to give us a new lift station, we don't want it. But that's kind of what we're saying.
And I support this, because they're very expensive, I know the Pheasant Hollow one's been, you've been working on it forever. Um, but are we, I'm just gonna be real, kind of open here, are we limiting what a del- developer could then do with the gravel pit area? Are we basically saying you can't have any sewer in there if you try to develop it?
Only that, there's, there's a, if you go to the gravel pit, there's a big, I guess that would be their holding water area that's really deep down that they've dug down.
Right.
That would be a hard area, I think, is what you're saying to be able to serve.
That would be a hard area, and to develop that, you either have to have a private lift station.
They could do it with a private.
Um.
So they could do a private one.
Privately maintained, um, or, uh, you'd have to, uh, have a, uh, you know, or you'd have to fill up the hole, you know, uh, too, and then you could develop it and, and get sewer out more of a traditional gravity flow means. Um, but you couldn't give us.
The responsibility.
To maintain.
We also do have a variance process that individuals can go through as applicable, right? To see if there is, um, something that our, what's the name? Um, Appeal Authority, thank you, deems reasonable to grant you a variance for.
But they, that, that, that Appeal Authority cannot put a burden upon the city to take a lift station?
Rob?
Rob, could that Appeal Authority come and put a burden upon the city to say, hey, you're gonna have to allow them to do a publicly maintained lift station?
It would be a pretty substantial burden for them to show why they couldn't develop with a private lift station in some other way. Theoretically, I guess, maybe they could make the argument that that route is all available to them. I, I think it'd be kind of uphill that, to show why, well, if you need a lift station, then make an HOA and provide for its maintenance. So, that would be our response to any kind of claim, that, that process does exist for any regulation that wears that you can't do this. They can always say, well, I'm really unique for a certain situation, then we have a, a process for handling that argument.
Okay, is there, uh.
Oh.
We need to, go ahead.
Sorry, real quick, the planning commission also expressed concern that, okay, if we're allowing private lift stations, eventually, if they were to break down and say the HOA is like, oh, we don't have the funds, and then comes to the city. eventually if they were to break down and say the HOA is like, oh, we don't have the funds and then comes to the city to fix it. Um, it was calling out if they are requesting to have a private lift station, that they must prove adequate provisional funding for maintenance and repair in, in perpetuity.
That's wise. Is that part of our motion?
Yes.
It is.
Oops, okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to go ahead at this time. We'll open up item number six, public hearing and tax amendment for sewer lift stations. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone that'd like to come up and address this? It's your chance, Wes. Can we talk about sewer? Uh, it is now, the public hearing is closed. We bring it back to the council for a motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion. I move the city council approve the proposed amendment to section five dash nine one oh seven. Underground utilities and sanitary sewer relating to sewer lift stations with the addition recommended by the planning commission regarding the funding for private sewer lift stations. And that's pretty much described.
Yes, that wording's included in the ordinance.
In the ordinance itself, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Scott, second by Kim. Are you ready for a vote? Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
At this time, council member Tim Ball has also entered back in, but was not participating in the last discussion or the vote. Okay, we'll now move on to item number seven, which is agreement with the Highland Grove Plaza reciprocal easement and access agreement.
Before Kelly starts, um, mayor and council, um, uh, based on some direction we got from some council members who are feeling like maybe some items were being put on consent that shouldn't have been put on consent, we've kind of created a second category and th- these are one of those items. So it's for items that, um, this and there's another item later in the agenda that were conditions of approval from previous things. For the, so for this one, you already approved the site plan for this. And part of that can, one of the conditions was get this cross-access easement done. Um, previously, we were putting on that on consent. We heard from some council members that, um, that, they still wanted to be able to have a discussion on this, um, these type of items. So we have pulled these off, um, um, and put them on the regular calendar. However, they are going to be very brief presentations because staff, because it's been discussed before. It, it, it's a condition of approval type of a, um, situation. So don't be surprised by a very brief staff report, or very brief staff presentation, I should say. Um, this meeting, they're scattered throughout the agenda because this is something we did the day the agenda was, um, being formed. In the future, we'd like to group them, um, but I just wanted to give you a warning on that.
So item number seven. And that will be done by Kelly.
Thank you, Erin, and mayor and members of the council. Um, again, a brief, this is the Highland Grove Plaza site that is just across the street from us. Um, the site plan was approved a couple of weeks ago and we've been working on a cross-access easement agreement. Rob drafted it and they also reviewed it and we're good with it. This is an exhibit, um, that will be updated with legal descriptions. That's a, the stipulation that's included in the report. Um, but you have fifteen feet on both sides and then all of the, um, stipulations or the, oh goodness, the details regarding the obligations in the agreement for both parties are outlined in the staff report.
Can, I just have a little question.
Yes.
I wasn't quite sure about the hatched area on the north side. Is that another access point?
This, oh, this?
Yeah.
This is for the ADA.
Does it go to the road up above or no?
No, no, this is just the ADA stall with the ADA ramp.
I didn't understand that, so, okay.
Good question, though.
Yeah, I wondered if it's another access point.
And so once again, council, the, with this access easement and as the staff has stated, that full, the full maintenance is going to be up on the, uh, this, the plaza?
On the, on the property owner to the north, correct, until the city develops, then we all take the responsibility for our portion.
Okay. Any, any discussions or a motion?
Um, I'd like to make a motion. I move the city council approve the reciprocal access easement agreement associated with the Highland Grove Plaza site plan approval with the following stipulation. Exhibit C will be updated to show the points and dimensions reflected in the legal descriptions.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Brittany, second by Scott. We're going to go to vote. Uh, Tim? Kim?
Yes.
Tim, or Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to zero. We'll go on to item number eight, which is an action items allocation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two general fund net revenue to Mountain Ridge Park.
Thank you, mayor and council. Good to be with you this evening. This is an item in the ongoing continuing discussion of, of financing, uh, Mountain Ridge Park. This is one of the items that staff identified previously, um, as you recall. The preliminary list was presented to the council of funding, um, opportunities back in August. Council provided feedback and. Oh, excuse me. We'll jump right to the end. Uh, September sixth, uh, council provided direction and staff has made transfers in accordance with that direction um, to the Parks Capital Fund. Um, and also identified, um, as you, with your direction, the, uh, additional potential sources, such as the, the closeout and fiscal year twenty-two net general fund revenue. So. I'm going to move over. All right, um, so where does this, uh, this million dollars come from? Um, it's primarily, uh, sales tax that was, uh, approximately three hundred thousand dollars more than what was budgeted. Some savings in streets, um, and, uh, in the Parks Department, um, streets particularly due to construction timing. Um, and snow removal expenses were less than anticipated. And, uh, and, excuse me, with the parks, uh, savings that was primarily related to playgrounds. Um, they're the ultimately were funded by cap, Parks Capital. Um, savings in open space transfer, there is a typically a transfer where the general fund subsidizes, um, uh, any, any funding deficiencies for open space. Um, and in this case, that included, uh, the tree project that ultimately wasn't completed, uh, last year. Um, and also some savings on the Mitchell Hollow Trail project that was also a transfer that was re, was less than anticipated. So, um, that's approximately one million dollars and the staff feels confident will be, even once the, the audit is completed, will be available. Um, there is potential that additional funds, um, may be identified and made available as, um, building inspection revenue is vetted, um, through the fiscal year twenty-two audit. That's a, a conversation that we've already engaged the external auditor with. Um, and so far, um, our methodologies appear to be i- in alignment with what, uh, he's expecting. Um, but just waiting to hear back what feedback might be from the state auditor through, uh, through our own external auditor, so.
So I appreciate the work on this and I'm very supportive. Let me, I, I think there was a session or two ago, we thought we had all the funds to pay for this park, but we were going to use some park impact fees, but then we found out, or clarified that the park impact fees have to go to paying the park bond portion, is that correct? But then somehow, when we reorganized the park bond, and I was on the council then, I did not realize that we were obligated never to pay that bond off early. So it seems like we have some extra park impact fees that go towards the bonds, but we can't pay the bond off early. So we've got a lot of funds sitting in that park impact fee area that we can't use for the Mountain Ridge Park. It seems like we've kind of painted ourselves into a corner.
Well, but one way we're working with is we go do our new impact study for the park impact fee. At that time, it's, it's when we vote to do what we're to do with in park impact fee. If we state that it can go for building parks instead of just for the bond, then it frees up that money. Am I understanding that correct, Rob? And Tyler, that will free the money up?
But the way the bond set off, we can't, or set up, we can't pay it off before twenty twenty-seven in five years.
That's correct.
Even though we may have the funds right now that are stipulated to pay that off, but we can't pay it off even though we've got the funds, which is kind of crazy.
So what Scott says, we've collected enough money now to pay off that bond, but we can't pay it off?
Pretty close, yes. Or within, within a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think, there.
I can't believe I voted for something like that. I always thought you could pay things off early, but.
There were significant savings when the ones were refinanced, um, to the city to the tune of, of over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so there, it makes sense that that was refinanced, um, in that way, but.
I remember conversations at that time, council member Smith, about, you know, we're never going to have enough money to pay it off early anyway, so it's okay. Um, and times have just changed, right? Like we, we had a boom in building we weren't expecting, so, um.
Sure. But at the same time, I mean, if we can't pay it off till twenty twenty-seven, we're still obligated to pay all that interest.
Even if you pay.
So we save some money, but we still got to pay the interest. I don't, I think the bank made the money.
Well, Scott, we probably could get hold the bank and say, hey, we'll pay all the interest. We just want to take it off our books. Meaning that we'll, we'll give you the money with all the interest.
I mean, if, if we can't really use it to build the new park, I just think.
Well, I think we can. It depend, Rob, am I understanding correctly that if we update our impact fee and in our impact fee, we state that it will be going towards, the impact, your fee will go towards paying off the bond and also to build a new park, then it will free up some of that bond money to go to build the park.
So yes, the last time we updated impact fee facilities plan, the, the document that says, here's what the impact fees will be spent on. They noted in that plan that we could fund additional park improvements, you know, to continue our level of service for new residents coming in, you know, so we're still going to have the same amount of park that's developed. But they took out the analysis, but basically they said, you could do this, but you have chosen just to focus on the bond. And so we're going to be doing a new study to basically say, well, is, you know, can we look at that level of service? And does it make sense for us to add in this park back into the impact fees? So we can potentially use some of those savings, like you said, because we can't pay off bond. You know, in the meantime, can we keep collecting impact fees and what does that number look like? So we're going to be doing that study to potentially rectify that situation.
But at the same time, I think we have to be careful because we want to get the bonds paid off. So would there be a temptation there to start using it for other things and not pay your bonds off? So we have to be careful, but. You know, when I approached the main, uh, construction manager for the Boyer property, I said, you know, gee, your division's going to be using the Highland Glen Park a lot. And his answer was, well, we pay all these park impact fees. And I thought, well, it's not going to really benefit that park, you know? So it's, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, I think, you know?
So Tyler, I have a question. It says savings in street construction. Why would, and I, and I guess this is a question with the council. We always have a lot of requests for new sidewalks or to up, you know, to maintain. We're pulling out of streets, that doesn't include, so where's this money for streets and why would we not want to keep it in streets? And I guess that's the only question, you know, how, how was it allocated that we're pulling it out of the street? And I'm not saying we haven't talked about before, about how much money was saved in the streets and what was it supposed to go towards?
Uh, this was specific to, um, uh, crack seal, um, repairs, um.
Is it coming out of eighteen fifty that was paid as a road fee?
No, no, this is general fund money.
And it's not that we're not doing it, it's just the timing of the projects. As we've talked about, construction year doesn't follow fiscal year and so we're still planning on spending that money. It's just now happening in fiscal year twenty-three instead of twenty-two.
And so we have the savings for twenty-two. Council, any other discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move the city council approves allocation of approximately one million dollars of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two general fund net revenue to development of Mountain Ridge Park and authorize transfer of this amount to the Parks Capital Fund for that purpose.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Kim. We'll start with the vote by Kim.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Four to zero.
Thank you.
Go on to item number nine, which is actions purchase agreement with Smith. Smith still works for the Mountain Ridge Park Furniture and Pickleball Port Shade Structure, as well as the park appointment for other city parks.
Mayor and council, um, before we get into this, we will explain the other, the other parks element of this. So, uh, in the budget, the, the council authorized, um, uh, twenty-three garbage cans to go to other areas of the city, the other parks in the city. And then, uh, we also had a request that, uh, with the work that we've been doing at Heritage Parks, that we put in some dedicated bike racks there. Um, because oddly enough, there's not any dedicated bike racks down there. And, uh, so twenty-three of the, whoop, twenty-three of the garbage cans are going to the other parks. And then we are going to put, uh, you know, some bike racks down at, uh, Highland Glen. Um, so about the rest of this is, uh, at the Mountain Ridge Park. And so this would be to, uh, place, um, the shade structure shown in orange, kind of on the right side of your, of your sheet here, uh, there, sorry, I was trying to find the mouse. So it's to, uh, build those shade structures, the, the little blow up of what those would look like is right here. So there'll be, uh, a gable instruct, in section, they are, uh, fifteen feet wide and twenty-eight feet long. And, uh, they will have benches or picnic tables under them, depending on where they're located on the, on the pickleball courts, on and around the pickleball courts. It's also to place, um, or to buy all the benches and garbage cans, uh, throughout the park. So the exhibit that you had had it all color, color coded up, the red, for instance, is a bench. Little purple areas where a bike rack will be, the blue circles are garbage cans. Um, and, uh, so the, in the end, um, the purchase for all of these facilities and recognizing that, uh, there's about forty thousand dollars of this that's paid, you know, to go to the other parks. Uh, so two hundred seventy thousand of it will go to Mountain Ridge and, uh, you know, about forty thousand will go to the other, the other parks. And this will complete our purchase so that we can implement all those garbage cans and then, uh, get these facilities lined up for the park.
What do these garbage cans look like?
Um.
Is there one in here? I didn't see one in the reference.
You're better on this. Kelly's going to pull it up real quick. We'll just pull it up and show you real quick. They have a little hood over the top so the water can't get inside and they have a Highland logo on it.
Are they fairly decorative and permanent, so they can't knock them over?
Go to, uh.
It'd be nice to.
Scratch receptacles and then that one, the second one, second one, that one right there, classic dome. Uh, but they, it's the middle one right there that you're looking at, but then it will also have the Highland City logo, um, built into, I believe those have the Highland City logos, I recall, and they're just, put a pack of, real quick.
Classic dome receptacle.
But with, it's important to us that they have a little dome top because, uh, number one, um, you can only put trash in it that you can fit in it, um, so we don't, we tend to not get the.
Boxes.
Trash, the pizza box that goes on top and then everybody else just puts their trash on top of the pizza box, if you will.
Is that why you don't like the flare on the top?
It, and then it has like, that has kind of a little dome on the top and so the rain can't get in there either. Um, because when you, when you fill the garbage bag half full of rain and snow, not really half full, but add all the rain and snow and, and other things to it, they get, they get a lot heavier as well.
Explain why you don't like the flare ones? Is that where you get too much garbage?
Oh, the flare ones? Um, yeah, I mean, we could do the flare ones, but, uh, but yeah, we, we prefer to have the ones where you have to, uh, you know, actually get your garbage to fit in the can so that, because what tends to happen is we have the ones that just have an open top, um, and, and the flare can be like this too. Uh, people put, like, so the pizza boxes, classic example, although it could be just the, the trash that isn't fitting and they kind of pile it around the edge and then it kind of creates the trash mound.
So what do you do with your pizza boxes?
They'll, hopefully you fold them up and put them inside, you know, so that they'll, so they go in.
So we'll have these throughout the Mountain Ridge Park, which are decorative and look nice, but are you going to have any other big garbage bins?
Right now, we don't have anything planned like a dumpster, if that's what you.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we don't have a plan for a dumpster at the park right now. We can implement one if the council wants to.
It just seems to me like if you've got some big trash, that people are not going to sit there and try to fold it all up and that. They may just leave it by the side of the garbage can. I'm just, I'm skeptical, uh, but I'm just thinking it might be nice to have a nice dumpster somewhere.
The only concern about dumpsters is people come from their house putting a lot of stuff in.
Well, there's always a problem with garbage.
Oh, there always is.
And, and like I said, I mean, uh, it's not, I mean.
Just an idea.
Right now, we do have, uh, dumpsters in a couple of our parks, right? And, uh, and we could implement one. This plan doesn't have one right now because it has so many garbage. I mean, I can't remember how many garbage cans we've got in the, in this, but we've got thirty-seven, so it's. It's got, uh, you know, like fourteen garbage cans through the, to the park, um, so it didn't have a dumpster, but we could, we could have a dumpster.
Well, I guess the idea is.
Well, I guess the idea is maybe, you know, if, if you're afraid that other people use the dumpster, maybe see what happens. But it just seems like if you had something big, that hopefully, you know.
If we were gonna put one, where we would probably put it in the end would be on that far west side of the parking. So if you go back to the plan, um, you know, on, on the left side of the sheet or the far west side of the parking, that would probably be the largest place to put it if we were going to put it. Um, you know, the, well, and the problem is, that's what I was gonna bring up, is that that would be logical from a use standpoint from out of the way. And it's also the closest point to somebody's house to be the stinky.
I was gonna say, you got it close to the west house.
Stinky dumpster, so it is kind of a two-edged sword.
Right, always is.
They, they do tend to be a little smelly too, right? Uh, but that, that's, uh, you know, so, but if the council wants us to implement.
Well, I just suggested, I doesn't mean the council supports it, but.
Yeah.
I, I guess we could wait and see too. So can, I, I have driven by there recently, I, I drive by there quite a bit. Do we have a big sign saying, Mount Ridge Park coming? Because I have people come to me and say, what development are you putting in there?
There probably is time for us to.
Think we need to put a big sign.
That is a good idea.
I think QR code.
Cause everyone's asking if it's a development.
Everybody thinks it's a development. I said, no, it's a beautiful park.
And they are starting today, as of today, they were working on the ditch in front, you know, that, it, there's a lot more action this week.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff starting to go on there with the construction and, uh, that's a good point.
We could put a big sign and say, you can donate towards this park, help us build this park. I think we need to generate some enthusiasm.
Or if you don't wanna donate and then put a big sign and say, or it could be Walmart, so whichever one.
Yeah, donate or it's Walmart. Now, don't say Walmart. We're gonna, we'll have to count the some.
Home Depot.
A home, you know, some might want a Home Depot.
Quick, quick, car wash.
That's an inside joke.
I agree that we should put a sign and tell everybody it's the park. And I'll leave all the rest to tell the county how you look at it.
I gotta be honest, I died past Wendy's, I did this, this morning, and they had a great big M on their sign. And I thought, are they telling us that they're not gonna become McDonald's or does someone at Halloween kinda do a little joke on them? Anyway, I assume it's a joke. Okay, any other questions on the shade structure and the garbage cans and the benches and the bike racks?
I'm not related to these Smiths, by the way.
Is there a motion?
There's quite a few of them.
As you're getting prepared for motion, I will tell, I was impressed with staff. Staff had me come in and say, okay, the sun's right here. Here's your shade structure, and you're looking at each hour how that shade structure's covering those benches. And it's like, now it's October and you're like, I mean, finally, they're too cold to be out there playing pickleball in November or the sun's gonna be low. I mean, it was just like, cause you almost can overkill on how all of your covering. But there, I wanna compliment the staff. They're looking at the hour, the, the months to see how that shade structure is working. So I had kudos to the staff.
Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve the purchase of park amenities from Smith Still Works in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott. Let's go ahead and we'll start with the vote with Scott.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Four to zero. Next item is item number ten. It's an action item, purchase of Musco lights for the Mountain Ridge Park pickleball courts.
And many of you may be wondering what a Musco light is. And, uh, those are the tall sports lights that you see at the different facilities, so they're about fifty feet tall and they're, uh, there was the best schematic I could find on their website today, but they're, the, the fifty-foot tall lights that will go at the corners of the, uh, pickleball court, and they'll light the pickleball court and the basketball court. Um, and, uh, so, uh, that's, uh, what has been contemplated and discussed today on the pickleball was, uh, you know, that there would be lighting at the corners. And so there, there will also be, I should mention, some lighting underneath the, uh, shade, uh, shade structures that we just approved. We're gonna put some lighting under there so that they're not shadowy areas, if you will.
So are these lights directed so they don't, you know, shine into the neighbors and we try to limit light pollution? I, I know with the pickleball courts, you usually have these, what, fourteen-foot high fences with shade structures that are twelve-foot? And sometimes that blocks, at least down with the American Fork ones in Art Die.
Usually the, usually what you see on the edges of the pickleball courts, that's like the solid sheet of plastic, if you will, is really for the noise. Um, uh, you, you know, and, uh, the mayor has asked that we investigate the cost to add the noise shields to our pickleball courts.
Yes, I agree.
Um, straight away, we had kinda just made provision that they could be added later. He's asked us to investigate how much that's gonna cost.
I think they should be there when you open a pickleball court.
I'll share it to you while that, uh, we did a tour with all the bears in northern Utah County this last Wednesday. We went to each different city. I was, when we were at Harvey Park there in Cedar Hills, I was really surprised that they'd put in all the sound barrier stuff. I'm like, but you're ways away from your residents. They go, no, we're still getting a lot of complaints. And I'm going, well, hold it, we're probably closer where our pickleballs are gonna be at than where theirs are, so we need to be sensitive and just start out right with it. I, I missed, at least on that north side, you know, we, the, your east side's gonna be the junior high, the south, or the west side's gonna be our playground. And then we have the baseball diamond to the, uh, the south, but I think at least on the north, are you thinking just the north side to try to put, or are you thinking?
Well, I had understood your request was to put the shielding down the, the north end to the south.
What, you guys, you think it's just doing it right, put it all around the?
I, I put it around. I think you need to mitigate light and sound.
The sides, the sides aren't tall on these courts. I mean, so when I say they aren't tall, they're, they're six foot. The ends, if you will, the north and south sides will be ten, the mayor's asked, we're looking at going to ten foot. And, and so typically you put the noise, um, barriers, the, it's kinda like a plastic sheet, for lack of a better word, um, up on, on those tall ends, so on the north and south ends. Um, out the east side, you've got, uh, um, the school there and then out the west, it's a pretty good distance to the, to the homes to the west. We would have the ability to hang some on the six foot, but, uh, to try and keep it a little more open feeling, if they're, they're, they're eight foot on the ends and probably going to ten foot on the ends. And, and that kinda wraps just a little bit, so at the end, and then it kinda wraps around just a little bit. And then, and then the middle is six foot on the sides, and then in the true middle, it's more like four feet, you know? Um, so, uh, that's what we're looking at. But these, these will be downward focused as much as possible to keep lighting on the court and out of the, out of neighbors' homes. Um, they are getting better and better with them. Um, uh, you know, so we, that is our intent, is to have them light the court and not the.
I assume they go off at a certain time in the night, we'll have to decide that by ten or something.
So, so Andy, have we done a light photo thing to show, this is where the light's at and this is how it starts to mitigate down?
This, this design for these four and this bid came from work that our landscape architect did with Musco representatives to, to come up with this design. Um, so, yeah, we did the, the study to say, um, how many lights do we need to light the court and, uh.
I just, I've played on a dark pickleball court and it's really hard when it, at night, you know, seriously, when it's a little dark, are you going, hey, I can't see the ball. And maybe I'm getting a little older, my eyes are getting a little lazier, but it's hard to, you know, cause I wanna play a little faster, so.
How late do you think the light should be on? Ten, eleven?
Ten, I mean, I, 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 I know some go at eleven, but maybe with, if we have neighbors, I think we'll have to kinda see what we have. I think we have to maybe start ten.
Cedar, Harvey, ten?
I think Harvey Park's ten. They shut off.
Yeah, I was just gonna say for our sport courts and residential zones, we do have a time that they have to have them off. I believe it's ten P M.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
If there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and go on a motion.
I'll motion. I move that the city council approve the purchase of sport court lights from Musco Sport Lighting for the Mountain Ridge Park Pickleball Courts in the amount of a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Tim. We'll start with Brittany for the vote.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Four to zero. We'll now move on to item number eleven, which is awarding a contract to Mountainland Supply for the purchase of P I meter fittings.
So.
Oh, this is a purchase contract.
This is a purchase contract. If, if you will, this, I'm gonna, if you'll indulge me, I'm gonna do show and tell for just a minute. Now, just a reminder, how we're financing our, uh, project is we've received a two million dollar grant from, uh, the Bureau of Recreation, um, which is federal grant. We received a five million dollar grant from the state of Utah. And then we are, to our user rates, contributing, uh, at least two point eight billion, um, uh, of local funds, um, in that, towards this project. And that's how we fi- we're budgeting.
But that makes our match.
That's our match.
Okay.
Plus a little bit, um, but it's what it took, the, the most the state would give us because of our population was five million. So the federal grant was a one-to-one match, meaning fifty-fifty program. The state's was a seventy-thirty, the state would pay up to seventy percent, we had to pay thirty. Um, but they will let us count the same local match for both grants, if you will.
Oh, that's good.
Uh, and, uh, but our budget was nine point eight, and so if you do those numbers, you know, the bare minimum we would have to match would be like just a little, under two point two billion, but it's gonna cost us more like nine point eight million, is what we're forecasting right now, so. So, uh, we're, we're looking at a local match of two point eight billion. Um, so here's the show and tell portion, if, if you'll indulge me for just a minute. So. And we've got some pictures, I have some pictures, you know, they're nothing like the real thing. So we're trying to do a lockup where you're, the city's gonna provide to the contractors, and that's what we're proposing tonight. See if they hopefully have talked loud enough to be in the mic. Um, so we're looking at two things. So we're looking at the city's, this, I'm gonna turn it this way so I can talk to you. So this would be our existing pipe that comes into the yards. So the first item that we're looking at is all this brass fittings that you see here, plus this little plastic pipe on the end. And that, that's the first item that we're looking at in, in item eleven. Then the next item in item twelve, we're looking at the actual meter itself and the little electronic readers. And then what you'd asked about the core, which is, we also will have, uh, a tower system that will allow these to communicate, I can't remember whether they communicate every hour or, or what frequency it is they communicate. But, uh, people will be able to, I can put this down here, sorry. People will be able to communicate, sorry, coming back. People will be able to get on and look at, you know, how much have I used by mid-month or whenever they wanna get on. And, and kinda get a live read, um, it's through a website. You log in and, and, you know, you get a user account set up and then, and then you can get on and see how much you've used that month.
So that's nice for the residents, but at the same time, it seems like the city is monitoring how much you use.
Uh, that's a requirement, these smart, these are actually a requirement of all these grants. We have to put in these smart systems. Um, but, I mean, I guess you look at it, that through metering, we're monitoring how much they use regardless each month, you know.
You're gonna pay that, but I'm just wondering if there's a point where you just send people a warning and say, you're using too much, I mean. Yeah, we'll have to decide that, yeah.
I, I mean, I thi- I think that, you know, the, uh, if you look at the motivations of the meter pro- program, I think it's number one that, hey, if people know what they're using, maybe they'll conserve a little bit more. But obviously, there will be a rate structure that's structured and that's, that's something that we'll look at in the ensuing years here, is how are we gonna do the rate structure? And, and the rate structure will be structured to try and keep you in an appropriate use for your property.
Okay, so Andy, okay, we got the city valve. Does this, the city, they don't come out in the spring or the fall to turn that off, right?
No, no, so what we're proposing, it's a little bit different here, is, um, and so the box that's on the bottom of the picture there will be, uh, what the city controls. And so the messaging to the residents will be after this. Cause right now, the residents, the, the, the valve that kinda turns off the service to the resident's home is kind of, it's in what the city originally put in. But a lot of people have kinda put their filters or some people have even put some of their valves or their stations in there. So the messaging to residents is gonna be the first square box in your yard is the city's, you don't get to put anything in it.
Do we need to put a little thing on this, this Highland City, so they watch the city?
Uh, we could, yeah, what we are gonna do is we're gonna bolt them, so they'll be kinda bolted closed. I mean, you could get out a socket set and open it if you want, but we're gonna bolt them to kinda discourage them, we're gonna message that. On the people's yards that we have to disturb their existing box, their existing box, um, which we're figuring is about two-thirds of those, we're gonna then install a second little round box that we put a valve in for them to turn their system on and off. You know, and that's the box that you can get in as a homeowner and turn the system on and off. And, and, uh, and the one that, you know, you could control, and then obviously you control everything backside of that. Um, there are, we figure about a third of them that we're gonna install where we won't even disturb the existing box. And so the, the valve that's there now will just say, okay, that's not the homeowner's valve. And, and, and we'd love to be even more of a third, you know, disturb as least as possible in people's yards.
So do you shut off the city valve part every year? You just leave it open, don't you?
We just leave it open unless we need to control it.
Okay.
Uh, and we just shut off the main lines and drain, and drain the main lines. So no, we don't go around and get.
So the other people can turn it off if they desire in their yard.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna give them a, a separate valve to just say, okay, you know, and we recommend it, right? So at the end of the season, we recommend that once everything's drained, you just close the valve so you don't forget the summer, or in the winter, uh, in the spring. One of those seasons, because when we, you as a homeowner have no idea when we're starting to load the lights. And so if that valve's open, and say you have a hose tap or something, you could find yourself flooding the yard. And so we, we encourage everyone to, once everything's drained, close the valve and then, then we can load the system in the spring and not flood you out, so. So, but, so the first purchase is for the brass, second purchase is for the meters. Um, there is a couple of things that are a little bit different than, or maybe add-ons to your, uh, to your staff report that kind of were late-breaking. So we've been working with the federal representatives and this grant program had added on, um, it's typically called the Buy American Provision, um, or the domestic, uh, purchase requirements. Uh, we've been working with them and we felt like that we would be in a waiver. Um, they, they, because with the, uh, new legislation that was passed earlier this year, they kinda renewed the Buy American, um, uh, requirement. So when you, uh, do a construction project and get the federal funding, you have to, uh, buy products that are domestically produced. Um, and so we thought that we were gonna fall within a waiver period. We were told just late last week that we probably have to get our own individual waiver. Um, because we had initially been told that there was a six-month waiver for this to let people figure it out, suppliers figure it out. And all we had to do was place our order, and that was before January twelfth of twenty twenty-three. Um, last week, late last week, we were told, uh, no, you actually have to pay for it, uh, before that time. There, we did have a discussion with them, uh, where we can apply for an individual waiver that says, uh, uh, these products aren't available, um, through a domestic source and, uh, but that's a course that we have to go down through for six months, right? To figure out whether we get, get that waiver. Um, so what we've added on is, uh, in the brass, we believe there's only a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of the, that equipment that isn't produced domestically and, and we're told by the suppliers, they're just not even available domestically, they're produced internationally.
No, that's always the problem, isn't it?
Yeah, and, uh, so with the brass, it's a small problem. With the meters, it's a big problem. And, and, uh, we'll talk about, about that. So at the end of this motion, you notice it says, if determined necessary to guarantee compliance with federal requirements, authorize a prepayment of those parts that can't comply with the domestic purchase requirements. Because then what we're understanding, and, and I tried to get him on the phone today and couldn't get him on the phone to just confirm this. So we're asking for a little bit of flexibility with this while we kinda vet this. But if we have to, to prepay for a portion of the parts that, uh, that, that we need to, to make sure we comply with the waiver as currently sits. Um, so I know that's a little bit.
The, the big difference here, the city code does not allow us to prepay, prepay for parts. This is a request to pay Mountainland Supply, which has been a long-term supplier of the city. If you're familiar, Mountainland is here, locally owned. We've done a lot of business with them. They have a lot of different offices throughout U- Utah. But we would, if we can't get a waiver, we, or we'd be prepaying them the two point two million.
Well, in this case, it would only be a couple hundred thousand dollars for this, but the meters is the bigger one.
Okay.
Yeah, so this we'd be paying, there's just, if, if you wanna. Yeah, so this we'd be paying, there's just, if, if you wanna. We're going to see just for the show and tell, real quick. This is the part that here, that they don't make it domestically, they're telling us.
What is that? You're just saying the pipe?
That brass pipe, right?
What about the, the meter itself?
Meter itself, in the next discussion, uh, this meter is not made domestically.
How, how familiar are you with the technology inside of that?
With the, all the parts?
Uh, um, is it like a pulse counter or a flow meter or?
It's, it's a mag, mag meter, this is a mag meter.
So it's a, it's like a?
It, it, it creates a magnetic field.
And then it calculates the flow based upon interruptions in the field, okay. So, do you know what the communication protocol is? How does it communicate with the, with, let's say, the gateway device? Is it like a ra- it has to be a ra- it can't be Bluetooth or Wi-Fi?
It's, it's a radio signal.
It's a ra-
It's a radio signal to these towers.
Which has to be nine hundred megahertz for North America by definition.
And I will completely take your word for it.
What I'm just saying is, there's a, there's a.
I'm not smart enough to quote all those.
No, no, I'm just saying there's a commercial, industrial, and medical band that's used for North and South America, and it's nine hundred megahertz.
Yeah.
Unless there's some sort of an, an exemption. So I'm just saying, I know that there are local companies that can do that, that they're domesticated. For them to, who, who told you that that isn't available domestically?
Well, and, uh, so, I, I'm happy to go through all the meters, uh.
We can talk about it later, but.
No, 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 I, I brought actually all of the competitors' meters, in case there was this question over here. So on the show and tell table are all the other meters that we, that we looked at. Uh, if, if you would like, I can answer your question with those meters.
So we're kind of combining two items into one, right? So number eleven is supposed to just be about the brass, number twelve is supposed to be about the.
High pity.
The, correct, the meter itself, but I know that's all in one in many ways. So, um, if we want, Andy, maybe it would be better to roll the card up there so that you're on the mic.
My show and tell card out there.
Is, I've got some questions for you, so.
Sure, sure. And, uh, Rob, I apologize, I'm gonna have to ask you to, to move. And. Your question, Councilman Bala, your question is actually the full reason for the show and tell card. Uh, so, um, one of the conditions of our water sources that, uh, is a little bit unique compared to some of our neighboring communities, and some of, a lot of our neighboring communities, I'm just gonna take Alpine for example. Alpine has a very robust filtering system on, uh, their press respiration system as far as on the city side of the system. So they don't get a lot of dirt in the pipes. All of you who live in Highland understand that, uh, depending on the time of year, and it's Councilman Smith accepted, cause you've got.
We get, we get fish gals in ours, so it's okay.
So you still get some, but depending on the time of year, you have to clean your filters on your system fairly frequently, because we do get, we do have a fairly dirty water source, um, in, in Highland. And, uh, in the spring, when the canyon's going strong, we get a lot of the mud and debris that way. And then when we, when we switch to pulling a lot of water out of Deer Creek, um, we get a lot of kind of moss. It's almost like moss, like, almost looks like grass clippings, and they tend to, to build up. And so, we went through a fairly exhaustive, um, search of all the meters that people are using here locally. But we wanna make sure that it's a, it's a meter that, that's a supplier that's, that's local. I'm just gonna show you. So I, I'm gonna actually, Debbie, with the minutes, can I come up and show you, show up on you real quick, so. Okay, so if you look through that, you see there's a target in the middle?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, this is a competitor's meter.
Okay. That's cool, so it gets plugged up.
What's the technology then?
It's, this one's ultrasonic.
That's ultrasonic, okay. Cause I know those are not, those are not inexpensive, ultrasonicers are not inexpensive.
Right, and these, more or less, these are all kind of comparative, um, so.
So that has a Victorville problem.
That has a what?
A Victorville problem.
So, so this, this meter, this meter is made by Badger, um, it has a target in the middle.
That's Wisconsin, Badger meter?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've heard of Badger meter.
Target in the middle, this one's made by Newer, Newer, sorry. Uh, it's got these little gaps, I'm just gonna show from the bar, you also have a target in there, but, um, you can see this one has kind of a little screen on the front, and then it's got one of those targets in the middle, right? And so again, our, our degree would catch up on it, and have a Victorville, Victorville problem.
Right.
Um, this one's made by Camstruck, it's a little different assembly in the middle, but again, it's got an assembly in the middle, right?
Yeah.
Uh, this one's ultrasonic as well. Um, what's the price of them? Uh, the meters, the meters are about two fifty, the electric meters are about.
Okay, where's your electronics, where I can look to see how much it is? Like the little, cause you said if I open my box, I can see it, I, I.
The, the box, really, this, this, this sticks on the lid of the box.
No, mine's just, mine's just floating free.
This is floating free.
Cause.
All right, we're, we're, we're all set, done.
I know, but where's the little digital thing? You said open it up, it'll show you how many.
They drilled up the lid, screwed the lid, and this is what's in there.
So, for example, Badger is a, is a domestic corporation out of Wis- Wisconsin, so.
See the one we're putting in, we didn't see if it has a little train over.
Look down the tube there.
The ones that we're putting in, you go out to production, and there's nothing to hang up on. That's the major, these are the ones that are probably going in.
Where, where's that one sourced?
Yeah, but that reduction.
Um, this is census, it's assembled in Mexico, and it's been in action for a very, very long time.
And so those are about four hundred dollars a piece when they're.
They're, these are awful, they're.
So about four hundred dollars.
So this one has, it's kind of a squished middle, but it.
But it's still open.
It's still open, so today, we have had problems with these. And, uh, we went to visit it, all the cities that are coming in, Cedar Hills, not for reality, cities have had it.
Will you walk back towards the mic, Andy?
Nope, no, sorry, Stephanie, I apologize. Show and tell is so exciting that, uh.
We are doing a true test of this new array mic tonight.
Of this new array mic.
Over here, just kind of hoping that it works.
So, uh, Newer, Cedar Hills is installing meters, um, American Ford is installing Badgers. Lehigh is installing the ones that we're proposing. Um, this Camstruck is not actually even available as a PI meter yet, they're very, very close. And, uh, so it's, 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 nobody's installing this in the state yet, or secondary, but there, there are never coming up. Um, so we went through a fairly exhaustive process to go around and evaluate them. And our problem is, while you're right, Badger is domestic, it has the target in the middle that doesn't work for our core source. That's our problem, is, uh, is we, we, to our knowledge, of the meters are so sourced locally, the census is the only one that we have any confidence in that we won't have two hundred calls on a given day for us to go out and unplug the meters. Now, I'm not saying that two hundred people won't have to unplug their filters, but the filter is kind of a individual thing, right? And so you have to keep your own.
But we're having to do the filters right now anyway.
Right, people are having to do their filters right now anyway, it doesn't change anything.
Right.
But, but if we put in a meter, suddenly we stop all the debris instead of the filter, our fear is that we're gonna have two or three hundred calls a day in those bad times when it's, and it, and it kind of ebbs and flows. You know, later in the season, it's not as bad, and.
So the meter we're putting in is actually made in Mexico, if you're saying, or assembled in Mexico.
Themed in Mexico, it comes with a stipulation.
So we couldn't get a stipulation or a variant saying that's in North America?
Well, they.
North American trade.
Part of NAFTA, yeah.
They, they kept, uh, telling us, oh, we think we'll be able to meet it, we think we'll be able to meet it. And then they kind of came, when, when, you know, we, we made them certify it on the bid, okay, can you meet, get them, but they do buy America requirements, came back and said, no, we can't.
Well, since we have open borders, can we have the cartels just bring them across?
Okay, so what the situation, what the situation is, because we can't meet the buy by America, what does that mean?
So because we can't get the buy America, we either have to get that waiver.
And how long will that take?
That probably takes about six months to get the waiver, and we won't know for six months. But here's our other problem, here's our other problem, is most of these parts are out, uh, for an extended period, right? So from our suppliers, we're getting told that we'll give you the first third of the parts by July, we'll give you the next third of the parts by December, and we'll give you the next third of the parts the following year. The, the little readers, these little pieces are even farther out. They're telling us they don't think they can get us the first third of the readers till a year from now. And so, the higher delay to wait to order for, uh, the, for this waiver to go through would really hurt us. Cause the other thing is, our federal grant tells us we have to be all done by, uh, the end of twenty-five. The calendar, calendar year, end of calendar year twenty-five, state, I don't remember the exact date on the state, but it's shortly thereafter. Um, so we essentially have, uh, you know, calendar year twenty-three, calendar year twenty-four, and calendar year twenty-five to, to build these. So if we wait another six months to order, we're backing ourselves up against a deadline.
How likely will we get the waiver? I mean, why if you do all of this, you know, get the waiver?
Who do you need to get the waiver from? Is that from the state or the governor?
It's from the feds, they have to get it, uh, from the, uh, uh, it, I mean, our representatives are from, uh, Bureau of Reclamation. So, it, it's, you know, we were on with Josh German and, and his team the other day, they haven't done a lot of them. So one alternative, and this is what I was trying to confirm to, to get, we have an, an assigned grant specialist. Um, and, uh, so we had four people on with us last, last Thursday afternoon. Four people were on with us, and, and, uh, they said, uh, well, yeah, we'll help you with the waiver process, but we haven't done a whole lot of these, cause the, the, there was, the federal government was doing a lot of buy America stuff back in like twenty-ten. And then with the, the spring legislation, and it's the new infrastructure act, I can't remember the name of it right now, yeah. Then they, they renewed it, but they, they aren't really experts at it either. Um, they said, yeah, we'll help you walk through the process, but there's no guarantees. So it appears that one way to guarantee it is to expend the funds, cause the, uh, Bureau of Rec, they granted a six-month waiver period from the, uh, from buy America, and that six months ends on January twelfth. So that's one way to get through is to, uh, just pay for them ahead of time, probably. I mean, that's, that's the one question we didn't think to ask when we had them on, on a, on a Zoom with us last Thursday was, okay, well, what if we pay them, pay for them in advance? And, uh, so that's what we're asking, is it council comfortable if, uh, if that's our guaranteed solution to, to prepay? It is a supplier that, that we have a longstanding relationship with.
So the motion we have in front of us is to, is to pay for the PI meter fittings, but you're talking about the next.
The next, well, both of them, this, this, uh, if you, if you recall. And Mountainland is telling us that nowhere in the United States do they, do they source a, a, one of these little, they call it a pipe sample. These old, uh, pipe samples here, they're saying those are all produced, uh, internationally. It seems like nothing special, I can't believe they don't, we wouldn't have any particular problem buying one, but first thing, they can't hit one, it's domestic, so. So that little part there, we may have prepaid to.
So is there a percentage that it has to be American or a hundred percent, including assembly? Because I know you can say a car, an automobile is made in America if it's X percentage.
My, my eye raise is, uh, is not, like, it's aspiration with your question, my eye raise is, I, I wish, and that's, that's why we're asking for a little flexibility with this, is I wish I was an expert in this. And those that are helping us are not really experts themselves, because it's kind of a renewed legislation, and it's a renewed requirement. And so, uh, you know, it's, it's, you know, they're, they're kind of saying, well, we'll, we'll help you. You know, wade through it, but we're not, you know, we don't have a perfect understanding of the process.
Is the software a different, a completely different cost? That's, is it third-party software, is it associated with the manufacturer of the devices, or?
It's what Mountainland uses to, to services, but I, I, that's a question I probably.
That's fine, I'm just, I'm just curious because.
We, we, uh, we went down, uh, Spanish Ford uses the software, they, Spanish Ford uses it, needed to have for a number of years. And, uh, they brought up, pulled up the portal, and we looked at how it worked and everything, but I, I think the.
I can ask you later, I, I.
And I'm happy to research it, but some of this.
So, Andy, worst-case scenario, if we can't get this waiver, do we need to find, will we lose our grant from the federal government? Is that what you're saying?
Well, worst-case scenario, yeah, if you can't comply with the buy America requirements, then you'd lose your grant, and so.
We have this, that we, we're paying for, um, lobbyists. Are, are they gonna be involved with this too, to help us with this waiver?
Uh, we haven't.
We, we haven't engaged.
Well, he's, he's got a state-level lobbyist, so I don't know that he could help us at all.
That's the problem, this is more of a federal.
This is federal issue.
So I asked Rob this question, so let's assume we lose the federal government money, then we have to fund it by the city. So the concern is, is about issuing the money and giving it beforehand, that let's assume that the supplier shuts down and takes the money. Are we liable to any paying back or anything, Rob, as you looked into it? And what I'm saying is, are we in a worse situation? We lose the federal government money, we've got to pay for it, or if we fund it with the federal government money, and it's not there, we still gotta fund it. Does that make sense? Rob, did you look at any of that, uh, from our conversation today?
I did look through the con- there's nothing really specific in there about, it's all governing the, our relationship to the federal government, not.
Uh, though.
Not what happens if, between us and someone else who might receive the federal government's money in the long term. So, nothing specific in there, uh, I'm sure there's plenty of federal regulations that get involved, there is, haven't had time to find them yet.
So, you have these people helping you on this, but could we go to our legislators on the federal and say, look, we're gonna need help with this, cause, you know, we have to have it done.
Certainly, those that are, are federal legislators, legislators, certainly. Uh, because, uh, yeah, this is, proposing for us is a perplexing problem, right? We thought we had it all figured out, because they had, they had this waiver period, and they told us about this waiver period had been granted in, it was in late July, and, you know, and, and they said, okay, you know, we've got a six-month waiver. And at that time, they said, okay, you know, all you have to do is order, because we, we posed the, the question to them, hey, right now, if we, and, and as an example, um, we ordered, because these are the current ones we currently put in, we ordered, uh, three hundred of those, um, early, early, um, twenty, twenty-two. Boxes just started showing up last week, uh, you know, and, and I believe there are the meters, and they, and we still don't have any reader units. Um, it's these plugged in separately, um, and, and so we, we knew that we had supply issues, and we, and we asked them, so, so what if we can't get them? They said, well, all you gotta do is prove that you made the order and you can't take delivery, and you're gonna be okay. And so we went down the road happily, and as we got approaching our purchase here, we started to, to say, okay, now, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna order them, they're not gonna deliver them, we're still okay, right? And, and our most recent, we got some mixed messages for about two or three weeks or a month, and, and then last week, we were like, okay, guys, you have to have a webinar with us, not webinar, a Zoom, with us, and, and they came out and said, no, you gotta check actually.
Well, but then that's when you get your federal representatives in, I think we probably just need to move ahead, cause it's hard to predict.
Yeah.
And so you've got your regulators, you've got the, and they're, they're telling you different stories, and that's a problem.
Yeah, and, and so, so like I said, that was kind of a late-breaking curveball, and so the suggested motions are to allow us, if we figure out, okay, the best thing to do is just to pay, prepay for these, how the checks count, cash, and, 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 uh, you know, comply, cause right now, there's just a general waiver, right? Until January twelfth, there's just a general waiver for this, so if we can just buy all this before January twelfth, doesn't even matter, so.
Is there any further discussion? I know there's a lot of money we're spending, but is there anything, anything else you need to know before we make my motion?
Andy, you actually need the sales tax?
I'm sorry, we got, so, so there is one other, um, slight curveball that we're still checking out. It may be that, uh, because we're not installing these, and we're gonna pay a contractor to install them, uh, that we may have to pay sales tax on these. Um, we're checking that out and seeing, we need to check out and see what our other cities are doing, um, before we actually.
But as I thought, as the government, Andy, we're taxing scent.
Yeah, there's.
There's a rule that basically, but it only if you're installing the item. If you're buying it and somebody else is installing it, we have to pay sales tax.
Unless you're a school district. Unless you're a school district.
So we're, uh, what, what we'd like to do is, is, uh, take a minute and kind of check out, okay, well, what are the other cities doing? How's everybody else handling it? How's it, how's it going? Um, you know, before we make our order, cause our, our big push is, I mean, we want to get them coming, um, you know.
I just think it's funny, the state is the one mandating first to put it in. And if they make us pay sales tax, it's kind of a, you know, oxymoron aspect.
Yeah, and we, we certainly.
But if, if we have to pay sales tax, we want the, the, these to go to someone here in Highlands. So the sales tax, we get a benefit somewhat coming back.
Right, but then we, then we work with our state legislators.
Oh, and that's where we can say, you know.
Yeah, I mean, cause we've got a good.
That's a smart one right there.
Yeah, and that, that one.
Let's see what we're hearing and then that's where we go to state legislators and they can.
They're looking mandated, there's never going to be sales tax.
They're stupid. You're making more of a.
Don't contemplate sales tax right now.
Right.
So that's kind of another.
So the sales tax, that could be in, in this part.
It could be, uh, it, it would be in addition, so that the, uh, there is a contingent, contingency in that, uh, two million, one ninety-seven fifty-five. There's a contingency number, um, but that would probably be eaten up in part by, uh, the, the sales tax would be in a part.
So maybe we put a contingency in the motion subject to approve, coming back to get approval on the sales tax, is that what you're saying?
Um, or.
We would just recommend saying something and if deemed necessary, um, additional amount to pay sales tax, so that we don't have to come back. We'll, we'll try to see if we can find a way to avoid it certainly, but if there's no way to, that we don't have to come back to council for us, to ask for that.
And I apologize, that's not even in your suggested motion. You late-breaking curveballs on this.
Right, but I think we can.
Did this come out COVID money?
Uh, so the state's money, the state money is, is all, uh, ARPA. They're, they're paying, I think it's all ARPA funding, I think the state's where it's coming from. Um, and the, uh, federal, I am not sure. It's just administrative Bureau of Reclamation, but I'm not sure what funding source.
Make a motion. Okay. As the pipe fitting is a little clearer, I think the meters is the next motion.
Yeah, the meters is the bigger, is the bigger dollar we pay.
Right, so on, on the pipe fitting, I'll move, the city council approve the purchase of P I meter fittings in accordance with the bid submitted by Mountain Land Supply in a contract amount up to two million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars. And authorize the city administrator to sign the necessary contract documents. If determined necessary, to guarantee compliance with federal requirements, authorize the prepayment of those parts that may not comply with the domestic purchase requirements of the federal grant. And in addition, if deemed necessary, um, we may have to find other funds to pay the sales tax.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Kim. We'll now start with the vote with back to Tim. Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
That passed four to zero. Now move on to item number twelve, which is the, a contract from Mountain Land Supply for the purchase of the meters.
That's the meters. Kelly, you can step us through this. So same background that we went through before, that's how we're funding it. Uh, same thing, this is just, it was a separate bid, because, uh, the reason why we separated the bid is because some companies could compete with parts, but couldn't compete with the meters. It so happened that Mountain Land won them both, but, uh, uh, there was different competition on the different bids. And so again, Kelly, you go forward and then here is the proposed, uh, motion. Um, and, uh, we would ask that you, if you, if you consider the motion that you, uh, add the same sales tax provision that you did on the prior one.
Any discussion before motion?
I have a question. Were you, were you able to find any ultrasonic, uh, meters that strapped around the pipe as opposed to being more of an invasive solution?
Were you, I'm not aware of any, um, uh, that, that did it for a lateral like this. There are some for, uh, I believe the larger pipes that'll strap on.
I've seen them, but you're right, they're for larger pipes. I'm just concerned that we don't have enough data to determine if those are, even those are going to be clogged, even the one without, cause it narrows down.
Right, yeah.
And, and so I'm.
Well, what, let me, we don't have data, but we do have experience. So we've been installing this one right here, this assembly minus its out, so they break the issue. We've been installing this in construction homes for approximately three years. We have about three hundred of these in the ground today. Um, and our experience thus far is hot. We have our own, um, experience.
Okay, lots of data.
Citywide experience, but, but you know, those people could.
So what's the incidence of clogging then?
Yeah, we're not seeing an extreme incidence of, of clogging with these. So that's part of our, I mean, we did check these out thoroughly. We met with the meter manufacturers, we went and talked to the other cities. Um, but ultimately, because of our water source, that's where our comfort level fell, fell back to, um, the one without the constriction in the middle and the one that we have experienced with. Um, you know, so that's.
So I heard you qualifying it a little bit though. Have you had any plug-in?
Can't tell you any, but we haven't had a problem enough that, that, that Tason and Jeff, who was a P I supervisor before, are saying these are, these are bad. But you know.
But you can't really get up there and say, there's none that have ever plugged.
Right, I can't say that. I can't say that.
But if there, if there are some, it's a very small number. Okay.
The, the one, the one city that we did go and, and interview and meet with is Spanish Fork. And Spanish Fork has been metering their P I water for, they were one of the first ones to, to meter it here. And, uh, ever since these meters have come out, they started, these, these meters came out, I don't remember, we'll, we'll say eight, nine years ago. And, and they switched to them and, uh, and, uh, they're very happy with them. And they have a number of them. I can't remember the number, but you know, Spanish Fork's, you know, thirty-five thousand people or so these days. They, they've served their city with them for a number of years and they're quite happy with them. That's one of the cities we wanted, cause we wanted to go and see them in place. And, you know, Lehigh has ordered them and, and so we knew Lehigh had constant, but we wanted to go talk to somebody who was actually using them. How's it going? How does the software look, you know, et cetera? Um, Spanish Fork's quite happy with them.
That's good. Hey, can you just, okay, can we just walk through? We have a twenty-one hundred dollar part, it's an electromatic.
Twenty-one hundred dollar part is the big ones for like parks and other things.
So how much does that individual meter there cost?
Uh, let me get my, let me get my computer so that I can answer your question.
So we have, the bid is we have three hundred and seventy each. Census, six cable, one gallon, two wire, a one sixty-six.
I'm sorry, I'm catching up. I just got logged on. My computer locked up in, in the intervening time.
Other meters, six hundred dollars, six oh nine?
Sorry.
Let you get there.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm usually caught up with you, but my show and tell, uh, had me, there you go. Okay, so, uh, yeah, can you pan to the left so I can see the meters? Okay, so the three-quarter inch eye pearl is a hundred and sixty-six for the, the meter. So we have about three hundred and, we, we padded these numbers a little bit, so we have, so we have about three hundred fifty, three-quarter inch connections. So, um, this one is a three-quarter inch connection, this is a one-inch connection. So the meter itself is a hundred and sixty-six dollars for, for that, two hundred fifty dollars for the one-inch one, uh, right here. But then you also have to add on the census five twenty M Singapore S M P D radio. And that's where I was rounding in my head, but when I closed, it's about four hundred dollars. Uh, but, so the little radio unit.
The little radio unit's a hundred and eight, that's a hundred and eighty-eight bucks.
A hundred and eighty-eight bucks. I mean, we come to this, Andy Holder, I mean, that's.
Okay.
I, I mean, uh, yeah, that's a hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So the combo of those two, the three-quarter inches is about four hundred, and the one inch is about four fifty. Uh, and then the other ones that you see down there are the larger ones. So the larger meters are actually a different brand. Um, but again, they don't have a constriction in the middle and they're, they're, uh, magna.
Where do they go? Are they going to our parks?
They're going somewhere in the parks, but we do have some homes and residents and businesses that have some of the inch and a half and two inches. Um, so these numbers came from our survey and from our best data that we could get and gather together. So, uh, that's, uh, we're, we're covering the, uh, the parks with these, uh, as well.
You have, you have forty.
Really expensive ones are the bigs, right? Those four inches are, are like.
Thirty-eight hundred bucks, thirty-nine hundred bucks.
Those are terrible.
Okay, now you have down a thirty-five dollar part and that, you're ordering four, forty-five hundred and forty-six pieces. It's an eighteen-inch length part. Is that the pipe?
Yeah, we're, we're not awarding that, uh, that part. We decided to do it, do without that.
Okay.
Um, but, but, uh, that was an optional part that you had to buy. And, uh, you kind of point the end series, so that you could change some of the other meters. Um, and we, we were pretty much out of cost, but.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Do you know what the rating is of the enclosures for the sensors?
As far as the lifespan?
The, the rating of the enclosures. So like, are they completely waterproof, water-resistant?
Supposedly, supposedly, yes.
Completely waterproof? So like, okay.
I would say, bring this over and put that, that, put it on both of the.
Cause it, it should.
Okay, are we ready in that motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve the purchase of P I meters in accordance with the bid submitted by Mountain Land Supply in a contract amount up to three million, two hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And authorize the city administrator to sign the necessary contract documents. If determined necessary, to guarantee compliance with federal requirements, authorize the prepayments of meters.
I ask that you also.
And also sales tax.
Oh, yeah, and also a sales tax.
If deemed necessary.
Necessary.
If deemed necessary on the sales tax. Okay, I have a motion by Kim. Do you not, it's, Stephanie was, do you understand that motion? Was it clear enough?
Yeah, would you like me to read it back to you?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Rodella moved that the city council approve the purchase of P I meters in accordance with the bid submitted by Mountain Land Supply in a contract amount up to three million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And authorize the city administrator to sign the necessary contract documents. If determined necessary, to guarantee compliance with federal requirements, authorize the prepayment of meters and also the sales tax if deemed necessary.
That's your motion?
I'll second.
I have a second by Brittany. We'll start with Kim. Kim, yes or no?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Four to zero. Now move on to, I thank you very much.
No, it's great. It's great. It was good to get educated. It brought back fond memories.
Okay, well now move to item number thirteen, uh, ten one hundred north landscape plan. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is one of the ones that Erin was referring to as far as a ultra-brief presentation. Um, this, we had plots F, G, and J come back to the city council for, um, final plot updates regarding the right-of-way on ten one hundred and the ownership. Um, and as part of that, the city council was asking about the landscape plan. Um, this was my mistake and I'm going to explain why I made this mistake. This, um, is the zerscaping on ten one hundred north. Uh, we have a plan that includes, like I said before, it's ten one hundred, Featherstone and, uh, North County Boulevard. And so we have these three, um, ground coverages that are included on North County Boulevard and on Featherstone. But for ten one hundred, it is only the two I have in red, which is the river cobble and crushed rock. And then you have these trees every thirty feet and a variety of shrubs that are included in the staff report.
So it's all zeroscape?
It is all zeroscape.
What a negotiation. This is great.
I, I know, easy peasy. Looked at it the next day, it was done.
Okay.
There's no further, is there any further discussion or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the city council approve the ten one hundred north zeroscaped landscaping plan as discussed.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Tim. We'll start with you, Scott.
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Four to zero. Okay, well now move on to item number fourteen, which is the city administration employment agreement. I noticed that was not attached to the agenda, but I've distributed it to all city council members. Does it, that, is it supposed to be made public at some time?
It will be attached to the minutes, Mayor, um, as it was provided as part of this discussion. We just didn't have it at the time of the agenda posting.
Okay. Have all, if, has all city council members received that? I sent it to you, I tried to also text, you know, a couple of times just to make sure you got it and ask if there's questions or anything. Is there any discussion that needs to be happened on the, uh, the? So I, I guess the big thing is, is this is for our city administrator, hiring, uh, Aaron Wells, our city administrator. This is the contract for employment agreement, uh, that had, then this, well, I will enter into that and it'll be kind of all official.
So I don't think there's any trouble passing the agreement. So we have the actual numbers that'll be attached to the minutes, but do you have to bring the actual numbers out in the meeting, Rob?
That was the only question, cause we haven't had it part of the packet.
Um, I mean, the contract is, is a public document.
But when we pass it in a public meeting, do we have to? I was just curious about that.
If we're passing it, but it's not part of the agenda?
I mean, we could throw it up on the screen and walk through it quickly. You don't have to, I mean, you're not passing a, an ordinance in that way where you have to have kind of written document there, so. But if you're more comfortable, we certainly can walk through it publicly.
Counsel, that would be up to you. Do you feel like we, you want to go?
I'm not uncomfortable just passing it, but I just wondered legally.
Legality. Or, and also making sure that's transparency.
Cause we've all looked at it and discussed it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just making a motion.
Okay.
I move that the city council approve the employment agreement with city administrator Aaron Wells.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Kim, second by Scott. Will you start with you, Brittany?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but it needs to be in the minutes. It needs to be in the public.
Yeah, it, it's, it needs to be, yeah, okay. Okay, we now move on to staff communication items. We have Tyler, you to go through a financial report.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. We're, we're coming to terms with our, um, clicker here, so. The, uh, the statements that we provided hard copies, uh, to, these are the same statements that were emailed to you earlier in the month of October. And, um, as well, we also emailed the full detail, we spared a few trees. Happy to provide any other detail, though, if you'd like to see that. Um, as we look at, uh, the, these statements, it goes through the end of September, um, three months into the fiscal year. So we're twenty-five percent into FY twenty twenty-three. Uh, as staff has reviewed these statements, a few items of note that we shared, uh, in previous email communication. Uh, licenses and permits revenue is, is trending high compared to, uh, the budgeted projection.
Now, are, when you're saying they're trending high, where are those license, are those just general home, house permits? You know, building permits is what you're saying, and permits that way? But is this coming in from Ridgeview or is it just coming from the city as, you know, just from the low, variety of different ways?
Um, honestly, I'm not certain the, this, the specific location. Um, we could certainly get that.
And I don't, I don't think we've had a lot been brought in by Ridgeview yet, so.
We can certainly follow up with that.
But that's a good sign. We're still trending. That's good.
Yes. Um, transfers, uh, from the general fund, um, are at one point nine million, um, seventy-five percent. Uh, that entails a lot of the transfers to, um, for Mountain Ridge. Um, and those will be included in the budget adjustments at the end of the year. Open space on, um, page two, you'll note that property sales, we've already reached the anticipated, uh, revenue expectation there. Um, budgeted ten thousand dollars and that we're up to at that point, um, eleven thousand dollars. Um, and there could certainly be additional sales here throughout the year.
There, there will be. I've signed a lot of contracts.
Mayor, mayor's pen gets a funny workout. Um, library, um. Um, library, um, again, the main, major source of revenue for the library is property tax, dedicated portion of the property tax, um, and so there's not, uh, that revenue has not been realized, uh, but will come in, uh, mostly in December or January typically. Uh, road capital, um, on page eight, um, there's expenditures, uh, they're related to the Sixty-Ninth West project. Everything you see there as far as expenses will be reimbursed, uh, by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, Joanne and I are often joking with each other, if we, has that check come in yet? Yes or no? Um, so we're, we're keeping tabs on that very closely. But, uh, by the end of the year, the anticipation is that that line will have zero expenses because previous year's, um, expenses that the city has funded will be reimbursed and received. So, um, looking at sales tax, um, September is the first month that actually applies to fiscal year twenty-three, uh, with July and August being moved back to twenty-two. Um, recall that our, our budget for fiscal year twenty-three is three-point-six million. Uh, in September, we received, uh, about two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. And that was, uh, a twelve percent increase over the same month last year. One month in and of itself isn't, isn't necessarily, um, enough to determine the full trend, but, um, that is an increase year-over-year. Uh, looking at the past twelve months, uh, September and then eleven months prior, uh, the rolling, um, total is, uh, approximately three-point-seven million dollars there. So slightly higher than what we had anticipated, um, in the budget. And we'll continue to watch that, that closely and see what the economy brings. So, uh, with that, happy to take any, any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
So, in discussions, I mean, it's always hard to predict the future. And we tend to budget conservatively, which is great, cause our sales tax the last three years has come in more than we expect, but we also may be going into a recession, it's always hard to tell. Uh, because people are cutting back, some of the large businesses are, so. We're, do you think we have enough room, room, just to kind of still meet budget with sales tax if it drops? You're feeling comfortable with it?
For the time being.
I mean, we're ahead now, but we may not be six months from now.
Right. H- historical, uh, data, looking at, um, our own sales tax revenues over the last twenty years, uh, once you see a number of years of increase or significant increase, there are typically, um, a number of years where there's a correction there, so. That's something we're keeping our eye on very closely, but right now, we, we appear to be on target.
Any other, uh, items for Tyler? Thank you, Tyler, for putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number B, which is easement modification for shore, for the Storm Drain Basin.
Mayor, Council, this is, uh, my Adam, and we do have a representative, a property owner, um, here. Uh, Mr. Allenberg is here, who can speak to anything, uh, that you may have, as far as a question. So what we're looking at is, uh, this, this home is located, uh, at the corner of Granite Flats Road and, uh, uh.
Okay, so you know the, the church on six thousand west, that you go watch, look at all the Christmas tree lights?
Yes.
Yes.
This is gonna be across the street from the parking lot, the backside parking lot. This home, the, the, the road that is on the east side, so it's on that corner, it's just right in that, that area across the street.
Yeah. No, this one's been there, this's been there since, uh.
This is probably Dry Creek Estates, I think.
Yeah, this, this is part of Highland Heights, by the, um, but, uh, this, this plot was recorded, um.
Where Dave has all his Christmas lights is the house probably across the street.
Yeah, it's, it's real close to.
The one on the corner.
Yeah.
That's, the one you have, that, it's that one there.
Yeah, that one right there.
So that, the two houses, the north of the Christmas tree light houses?
Yeah, the west side.
I'm sorry, it's on the west side, did I say east?
Yeah, the west side.
West side.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. So, when, when the development was approved, um, the, uh, the whole backyard, basically, if you, if you look, look there, the entire backyard was a detention pond easement and, uh, basically the backyard of the whole place was, uh, supposed to be a detention basin. Um, about a year ago-ish, and Alan, I'm gonna clarify, uh, the home was purchased by, uh, Greg Eyre, and hopefully I'm saying Greg's last name correctly. And, uh, Greg wanted to, um, had identified the easement in the, in the purchase, also identified that the basin is constructed, the basin where it basically sits is circled with that blue circle, um, wasn't nearly as big as what was shown on the plot, what it was supposed to be. It didn't end up, and however it didn't end up being as big as it was supposed to be, your guess is as good as mine, I've got some theories, but doesn't, doesn't really matter. Um, at this point, the long and short of it is that, uh, uh, it's not as big as it should be. The other factor in this is, I believe where that basketball court is that you see, is that, uh, Greg would one day like to come and build a, uh, accessory structure, kind of separate garage or something there, po- possibly. Um, but, so Greg approached the city and Alan, was working with Greg, and if you go to the next figure, oops. Yeah, and, and came and said, uh, could we, uh, reconstruct that basin such that it would be shaped more like an L? And so what they're proposing is to reconstruct the basin, uh, in that blue envelope, if you will, that you see on your screen, and, uh, they will actually recapture, um, the volume that needs to be in the basin, so they'll build the basin to the right size, and then with the city in turn, vacate the easement, um, the original easement and change the easements, uh, and, and a little bit on the top right there, yeah. Yeah. Change the easement such that, uh, such that, uh, they're, they're now shaped like what's shown in the blue there. Um, I've been working with them and they're engineer, um, we haven't finalized the plans. We got to a certain point where it's like, yeah, that should work, but why don't we go get any feedback from the council? They were proposing initially to modify this by a separate document and, and just do it by a document. They've talked about it internally, they'd like to just do a, an amended one-lot subdivision plot so that the land record going forward is really clean. Um, but we decided that we would bring it forward to the council to see if you have any concerns, any discussions. The other item that, uh, that Greg asked be discussed is, uh, because this is most of the backyard, um, the original, uh, requirements through the CCNRs and what was on the, uh, uh, the, the plot were basically that the basin was grassed. If you go back there today, it's kind of carved in with a pretty rock wall and they've got some vegetation on top of the rock wall. When they come to redo this, um, and there's a trampoline right now in the, in the basin area, when they come to redo this, they're, they're building this home, uh, so that this is a place, well, building this, redoing this so that, uh, this is a place where they can have their family gatherings and so they wanna have, you know, play equipment and things like that. And so they're asking that the verbiage be changed such that the detention basin can have a trampoline in it and it can have, uh, play equipment and it can have things besides grass, it can have shrubs and other, other things. I don't have any particular concerns with it as long as it's something that doesn't flow down the storm drain, so if they do their flower beds, if they have some mulch or another have like a rock mulch so it doesn't flow down the storm drain, uh, we wouldn't want anything like kind of the tire turf that goes in some playgrounds or something that then goes down the storm drain. But if it's just kind of, you know, either just soil beds or, you know, rock mulch beds and they have some play equipment in there and when it happens to back up, play, play equipment gets submerged a little, for a little while, and they're okay with it? I don't really see a big problem with it.
So how often is there water in this? I mean, it's hard to predict, we've had dry years now, but we may have some wet years where there's water in there.
We, we did identify one more problem, and that is that most these detention basins work by, we deliver a pipe that's this big in and we let out a pipe that's this big. This one is currently constructed, let out too much water. And so this doesn't see water that often, but it, it lets out too much water, so.
So stipulation in here that we're not liable, it's like, if they put a, a ground's trampoline and it floods that whole hole and washes their trampoline away, there's no liability for this?
Yeah, I think we would definitely wanna have that stipulation in there with these modifications. This verbiage as proposed, um, was provided by Mr. Eyre, um, is what he had, he had requested, but I think that's why, as Mayor, that if we do allow some additional materials in there, that if there's damage because it's a storm, that they accept that risk and it's their liability.
Mr. Meyer's been really pretty good sitting here through our whole meeting. Would you like to have him come up and just discuss what he was hoping to have done? If that's okay with the council? I, I assume this is Mr. Meyer?
Uh, it's, it's his local representative, Allenberg's. Um, so Mr. Eyre lives pretty far out of town, and so Alan lives out of town too, but he lives closer, and so Alan gave me.
Yeah, Greg, uh, lives in.
If you'll just state your name, please, for the record.
Allenberg, I work for Greg Eyre. He, uh, he lives in Houston, uh, he has a youngest child, just started high school, and he's gonna retire when he graduates, that's on the record. So this is gonna be a kid, grandkid, uh, kind of thing. And now, he, you know, uh, Andy covered just about everything we're talking about. The, the neighbors with the fireworks moved, by the way, so I think that event might be.
Oh, and that, no, no, this is the Christmas lights. Go there at Christmas time and you'll understand what I'm saying.
No, I saw it.
No, the neighbors with the Christmas lights, but they, uh, they put a stipulation in the sales that the Christmas lights would still have to go on.
Oh, cool, okay.
Yeah.
I had a blast.
As good knowledge.
Had a blast seeing that for the first time, yeah, it was, it was fun. So, uh, no, I, any questions you want, Andy covered it all and, uh, the proposed, uh, liability, that would be fine, no problem.
Now, is there, right now, the property's not fenced, and so it's?
It is fenced, the backyard is fenced, actually, you have to go through, uh, a fence to get there, although I don't think that a fence was, uh, was originally stipulated, but in practicality, it is fully fenced. And I would just propose, they're proposing to keep it the same, keep the backyard fenced off private.
I think so. We've had a brief discussion about that, but they got a bigger, you know, bigger plans. The, uh, if, see the basketball court, you see a little grass area right above it, and you see the driveway up above, and there's a fence right there, uh, where the arrow is. He tends to add on in that area more living space. But the recreational area for the kids, for the grandkids, is pretty much that, that lawn area where the detention pond is. He's wanting to make use of that detention pond in such a way that it doesn't interfere with the, uh, the volume. There was a rain event, um, uh, I was, uh, not in town when it happened and Greg was, uh, which we saw actually, it did back up to about knee-high and, and it was emptied out fairly quickly, which probably explains the, the exit pipes a little bit on the big side and, and we saw, discussed that a restricted plate will go on there and keep it to three inches, I think, is what it's supposed to be. So that'll be part of it too.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Our purpose in bringing it is, before they spend the money and go through the process to amend the plot if there was any major, you know, obviously you can't vote tonight, if there's any major opposition or anything that council had, we just wanna make sure the council generally is okay with this.
I, I think this is fine. One concern I have is we're going to have other retention or detention basins in other parts of the city that are on people's property, are we gonna allow the same things?
That was my big question.
I think, I think we wanna be careful with that, but I, I, nothing that I've discussed with them to date would.
So we're not gonna broadcast it and say you can do this now, but if they come in and ask.
But that is, I mean, whatever we grant here, for a grant.
Yeah, we grant here, we have to grant to everybody.
That one.
But they also, I think they need to assign some liability, that they can't block the flow each and some things that way, cause.
Yeah.
Like you mentioned, it does appear that this is used as a detention basin, so.
Yeah, so.
They block the flow of these many.
But is that, generally seems to be acceptable, we'll kind of.
Is there, is there anyone that has concerns that would like to see something different? Okay, I think we're, I think we're fine with it for the, okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Uh, just item number fifteen A, we have, coming up on November ninth, our Lone Peak Public Safety Meeting at seven-thirty. Oh, do you have, there's something?
I have one more.
Meyer's, or the fifteen C. Yeah, the Meyer's, I'm sorry.
I'll be, I'll be quick, uh, and, uh, um, okay, can you take? Okay, so where we are is we're looking at Highland Hollow. Um, and so down there, this is the road that's right in the bottom of twelve-hundred East in Lehigh. It's our Red Hawk there. Um, so the Meyers purchased the property that, uh, the city actually used to own and we traded, um, to help secure some of the open space to the east of there. Um, they purchased that and, uh, they, you may have seen, if you've been over there, that they've been doing some early earthwork and, and doing, you know, uh, doing some of the early preparations to build a home. In, in order to serve them with sewer, they have to run their sewer to the lift station, where I've got it highlighted there, it says city parcel at lift station. So they've gotta basically run their sewer lateral across the city's parcel to get to the lift station. Um, and so in order to do that, we've told them that they're gonna need an agreement with the city. Um, and what we're proposing is that it not exactly be a easement that says you can put your pipe here exactly, but that you, we say, okay, we're going to give you the right to place your, uh, put, run your sewer across the city's parcel, um, generally in this location, but if we need you to move in the future, you know, you will accommodate us and move. The likelihood of them having to move is pretty minimal, but, uh, I, I think when it comes to this lift station, this park, um, there's probably a lot of discussion yet to come in the future.
We actually might have an issue, I just forgot. Lehigh, we have an agreement, an easement agreement with Lehigh City, to be able to plant their, they're gonna be putting in their big PI line.
Yeah, run a PI, PI line, they're kind of following the creek, is I believe, uh, aren't they? They're kind of more or less following the creek.
I don't know if they're gonna, cause they were supposedly putting a trail on top of it. They might be following, I mean, it depends, I don't know if it's following the creek or a little bit off the side.
I would think with their PI line, they'll be above this, cause this will be, you know, tying into the sewer.
I just wanted, heads up, we already have an easement there.
I think the two would cross. Um, but that being said, I appreciate the point and I, I agree with it and it actually leads me to the point of, the reason why we're proposing to do this agreement instead of a fixed easement is because of things like that, where it's like, yeah, we feel confident we can serve you sewer, but, you know, no, we don't know, nor does he, nor does any of us, whoops, sorry, that, that know the full future for the park, and so.
Refresh my memory, I just have a quick question. When we made all these agreements and selling different things, are the Meyers in Highland or, or Lehigh? They're still in Highland?
They're in Highland, um, they're wonderful people, and I don't shake my head that way, they're wonderful people, but, uh, when everybody, when everybody, uh, did the deal, everybody thought that the property would actually end up going to Lehigh and it would be kind of.
But it's staying in Highland.
It's in Highland, it stayed in Highland.
So it's not a big problem, is it? I mean, they're Highland citizens.
No, 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 the, the, I think the question is, is that as they come across, this is the road for us to get into our park, going back into the park, this is where Lehigh, we have an easement agreement for them to build a trail on top of it, we're gonna have a road there, we're gonna, they're gonna have their PI line, this is not a small PI line. I mean, this, this could be their main truck coming from the Dry Creek Lake.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, this is, this is a big PI line.
This is a big PI line and, and, and everything that you indicated, Mayor, is, is what I was getting at, that, that there's, there's a whole different future for this park and, and what it is over time, yet to be determined, right? But, uh, and so, and also to acknowledge Councilman Smith, they're Highland residents and so we are trying to accommodate them and serve them and find a way to serve them, right? And so it's.
Cause I originally thought that was going to Lehigh, that's why I was kind of confused.
Yeah, that's what everybody thought was gonna happen.
Well, I'm, I'm glad it's staying in.
And, uh, yeah, it's, it's just, and then I, I say that just in the fact that it's, it's very isolated and kind of like on a little island, uh, the way we, to have to serve it, so it's a little bit difficult, but we found a way. They, they've, they've been working on this for about a year now and, and give them credit, they've got a lot of fortitude, they're sticking with it, but it's not an easy parcel to build a house on. And, uh, so anyway, I wanna give you a little precursor discussion because in a forthcoming meeting, probably the December meeting, you'll see this agreement and, uh, and that's kind of the way we're proposing to handle it with them.
So, Mayor, I, I agree with this. So, at the end, can I bring something forth that's not on the agenda? I just wanted to just, uh, make the council aware. Okay, so there were some emails that I had with, am I, were you done, Andy?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay. So, there was an email today between Erin and myself and, and different things, and there was a letter that came from the North Point Waste Management Transfer Station. So, last week, uh, we had our meeting and we passed our tender budget. One of the problems is, is, you know, all these policies at a higher level have affected, um, um, transportation costs. And one, so the transfer station, all the garbage is taken there by the haulers and by individual people and different things. And a, a large majority of it is then transferred to, uh, East Bay. Is it, is Bay, no, it's Bayview, I'm sorry. Bayview down by Goshen, and that's where most of the trash goes, and there's a big landfill there. There's another landfill in Fairfield where. landfill in Fairfield where construction and demolition stuff goes, okay. So, there's one company, they've had three bids, there's one company that hauls all that, it's called MBI, which is kind of an interesting company, 'cause it's Mr. Bates Incorporated or something like that. It's, it's kind of an interesting name, but their costs, because of fuel, have gone up, and so we had to increase the tipping fees by two dollars and forty-three cents a ton. They figured it out for Highland, it will cost Highland about twenty-one thousand dollars more, but we haven't passed the permanent budget yet, that happens on the fifteenth, I believe, fourteenth or fifteenth of November, and so I just wanted to make you aware, they calculated it out, and they were using it on four thousand, uh, five hundred and thirteen homes, if I remember correctly, and they were calculating it would cost residents in Highland about forty-two cents more per month. So we'll just have to factor that, and just want to make you aware, we haven't made the final decision. They also, we were promised on the board down there that if transportation costs dropped, that we'd be able to come back and reduce that, but, um, there's a dollar increase for C and D that goes out to Fairfield, which is construction and demolition, and then the MSW, which is your main garbage stuff that goes to Bayview, um, that's two dollars and forty-three cents a ton. So it'll cost the city twenty-one thousand dollars.
When would that go into effect, Scott?
It'll go into effect in January.
So if you remember right, Mayor and Council, because of all the other fees we were increasing this year, we did, um, it's, uh, council passed a fee that was a break even fee, um, and so we did it at the time based on what we thought our tipping costs are. So when, when Northpoint finalizes that, we'll take that into account and let you know if we feel like we can make it or not, right? There were a lot of assumptions built into that, we did the best we could, so.
Well, and I think we may have more homes that are serviced, so actually, that's the, yeah, so.
It's hard, because, you know, and we try to take into account, but then more homes mean more, more, uh, tonnage, right? You know, so then that tonnage.
Probably doesn't change much.
It doesn't, 'cause we tried to do it, this is what every can costs, you know, on average, but.
So it increases it by about fifty cents a month.
So we'll look at that and see if we feel like our rates are set to absorb that or not, and we'll bring that back for discussion, um, when Northpoint finalizes their rates.
Thank you, Scott. If, uh, if we don't have anything else, just going through future meetings, we have the Lone Peak Public Safety on November ninth, uh, we have, on November twenty-ninth, we have our work session as a City Council here at six P M. On December sixth, we also have another work session, probably go over the cemetery, and we have our standard City Council meeting, so we will be starting at six o'clock, and then we have our City Council Christmas party on Thursday, December fifteenth. Is there any other dates or anything? Anything else the council needs to bring before the, the body? If not, I'll make a motion for adjournment. So moved. Grab a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.